I have to read this per the governor's order. Due to the COVID coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order, pursuant to Executive Order 202004, the Henniker Board of Selectmen is authorized to meet electronically. The town of Henniker will be utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 202004. I gotta clean this up. All members of the Board of Selectmen have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to listen to as well as necessary participate in the meeting by following the link below, which is located on the henniker.org website. You can also dial in using and entering the ID number at the prompt. For those who want to provide public testimony in the public hearing portion of the meeting, and you are connected to the Zoom website, you may click on the raise hand icon in the attendees section of Zoom to make the request. When the time is appropriate, you will be recognized so that you can provide your testimony. For those calling in who want to provide public testimony, dial star nine to alert the host that you wish to speak. The host will unmute you at the appropriate time during the public hearing portion of the meeting, and all participants, please keep your phone and computers on mute unless speaking. Again, the website address, meeting ID, and telephone numbers are all located on the homepage of henniker.org. You can also email townadministrator@henniker.org or use the chat function on this as well. Okay, so we will move right along into the meeting. That's what I have for announcements. Public commentary, are there any members of the audience that wish to address the board on any issues that are not currently on the agenda? I understand that we have Cordell wishes to speak, but is there anybody before Cordell that wishes to speak? Please raise your hand or do something to draw some attention to yourself, and either Vice Chair Tia or the Town Administrator Joe will call you up.
And if Joe could just kind of describe why we're in this new viewing style.
So we kind of, we've moved to this webinar format, and the kind of the reason behind it is, within the past couple of weeks, there's been a lot of attempts to, with what they call Zoom bombing, our meetings. We've had a couple of meetings that have been attacked, and we were able to clear it out. We were just in a meeting last week, a joint meeting with the kind of Ware that got hacked, and they put nice things up on the screen, they type things, and they take control of the voice. So an attempt to do that, this is why we've moved to this platform. The idea behind it is, is just to try to keep it a little bit more locked down so that we're able to conduct the meeting as required without having to deal with any possibilities of any improprieties. So, you know, somebody has their hand up already, we are able to unmute you so that you can speak, things like that, you are going to be able to respond. We can see you, although we're asking is when we unmute you, just state your name, first and last name for the record, so that Kelly has the proper minutes for us.
And we can assure you, you don't want the halftime entertainment that usually comes with a Zoom bomb. Okay, so I see Heidi's hand up. Heidi, go ahead, please, you have the floor.
Just a comment, and I'm sure you're aware, but there's many asking if the balloon is going up tomorrow for the cell phone tower with the snowstorm.
So, just so everybody's aware, I spoke to the gentleman from the cell phone tower yesterday, and he was planning on moving forward as he planned on it. So as far as I know, he has not canceled or done anything, so I'm assuming it's going up as of right now.
And I'm sure you'll publicize that, Joe, because you're really good about that. So that was my comment.
Totally.
Yeah. Joe, I don't know if you want to check in with Mark, because I thought they were rescheduling if there was snow, based on the last communication.
And they very well might, but as of right now, he was not planning on it, so.
Has a comment?
Joan, Joan, you have the floor, please unmute.
Hi there, I disagree with your new format. You can hire someone to monitor the Zoom meeting and give us more of this access and transparency. I disagree with his new format. I like the opportunity to either take the, turn off my camera or not. I disagree. I think you're chipping away at our access to you, and maybe you should go back to regular meetings at the community center. Thank you, Joan O'Connor.
Thank you, Joan. Any else for public commentary before we move along to Cordell? I'm not seeing any other hands come up, so without further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce Cordell Johnson, who is going to be chatting. Cordell.
Hello there, I just want to say. Hello, okay.
We can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to say, you can prohibit, you can prevent Zoom bombing, but you can't stop your town moderator from saying something obscene.
Oh yeah, try it.
I suppose, I suppose you could prevent that. I'll try not to do that. I just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with town and school district meetings. Lost track at this point of who I've met with and when. But when, when we last met, last week, I think, the joint meeting with the Ware Board of Selectmen, the resolution of that was that, because the town of Ware was committed to having their, sticking their schedule for both their election and their deliberative session, and because all of our elections are tied together by virtue of being members of the John Stark School District, that we all must have our elections on March 9th. And so we would have the Henniker Town Elections, the Ware Town Elections, and all the school district elections on March 9th. The, all of the deliberative sessions from Ware and the school districts would be held in the next week or so. And we, the town of Henniker, can still have our business session wherever, whenever we want to do it. And so the, the, the Henniker School Board met on Friday, decided they were going to have their deliberative session on February 1st as planned, because they didn't really have much of a choice. Shortly after that meeting, the governor issued his emergency order 83, which provides more flexibility for towns and districts that are, if they want to postpone their town, their meetings. The attorney for the school districts is of the opinion that that order allows the school districts to unlatch or disconnect their own elections from the town elections. And so the districts are considering doing that. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I'm not anyone's lawyer here, so it's, so it's not up to me. So the school districts are now considering whether they want to postpone their deliberative sessions and their official ballot voting session, so that they might actually be voting on some day later than March 9th. Just wanted to let you know that, that does not affect the town. We, so we can still have our election on March 9th or a later date, whatever you guys want to do, and we can have our business session whenever you want to. The only effect that this would have if they postpone everything is we might end up having one election for the town and one election for the school districts. And so I think, you know, the downsides to that are, somebody's got to pay for it. I'm pretty sure the school district would pay for their own election. And the other downside is, if people want to vote in, for both the town and the school district, they have to come out on two different occasions. The, so all the school boards, I believe, are meeting tomorrow to make their final decisions about what they're going to do. So by your meeting next week, we'll know what they're doing, and that may help you decide what you want to do.
But Cordell, there's nothing prohibiting us tonight to making a decision, correct?
No, nothing, nothing to stop you from making a decision tonight.
Let's go ahead with March 9th.
It's the board's pleasure. Do you see anything wrong with keeping our status quo, Cordell?
I don't, no, no. Well, as I said, the, the only downside, assuming the school would pay for its election, actually, two downsides. One is, if we stick to March 9th and the school board's postponed to April 5th or May or whatever, again, that means people are going to have to come out to vote twice. It also means that the election officials are going to have to show up twice. You know, I don't mind, I can, I can give up another day. I assume we can get the supervisors for that second election as well, but that would be, that would be one more thing that needs to be done.
Yeah, you know, but let's consider about the people that want to attend these, these meetings. The earlier we do it, I think the less people that we're going to get. The later we do it, if we go closer down the road, the more people that we'll get. And I think that will happen greatly with the school system as well as with the town. And so I would be one to consider kicking it down the road as much as we can. We don't lose anything for doing it, and I think we'll just have a much safer environment if we do do that.
So here's my concern, Scott. We, we have our tentative date, but looking at the vaccine rollout plan, I think we're going to see this, you know, rolling out slower than what we anticipated. You know, they're scheduling the 65 and over out until April at the moment. Chris and I will not see the vax, and Joe, won't see the vaccine probably until 2022 at this rate. So I don't think it's going to really inhibit anybody from participating if they want to participate.
Of course it will, of course it will. It'll inhibit the people that are afraid that they'll be, you know, hurt by the virus.
Look at how many.
The longer it goes, the more people get vaccinated.
Look at how many people showed up to vote at the presidential election for the ballots.
I look at how many people went to vote at our town meeting last year, after everything. Pretty low numbers.
Well, that was.
Don't want that again.
They also changed the date of the meeting twice. We had technology issues, so people left even before we got to the gym, because people were frustrated. You know, so communication has to be key if we change anything, but if we change it, we only change it once. But I don't see a problem with moving forward with a ballot vote on the 9th at all.
Scott, what's the event that's going to happen? That's going to make it more, that's going to give us a greater attendance if we wait for a month or a month and a half?
Well, the whole deliberative session, so that more people would feel safer going into it and paying attention to it.
We're not going to have that much change. There's not, nobody is predicting that much change in the vaccination schedule. They aren't, like Tia said, people that are beyond 1B aren't going to even get a vaccine until next year.
They're younger and healthier. Those that are not young and healthy will have a better opportunity to it.
Okay. But there's no, give me, give me a time when there's going to be an event that's going to convince you that more people are going to come out to vote.
It'd be nicer weather in May.
We're going to end up, if we do that, the same way we did last year. You've got major projects that are just going to sit on the shelf and not get done for another year. That's unfair to the departments in town and unfair to the employees.
We've got funding available.
Yeah, we don't, technically, we don't, Scott, because we're using a tan. Our fiscal year's already started.
Yep.
So we have technically no budget right now, until it's approved at town meeting.
Well, I still think it's better to give people a better opportunity, but it's safer opportunity for the school and for the town.
I have Lori Marco from the supervisor of the tech checklist is on, and so I just want to get her take on staffing availability, or if she has any concerns, if that's okay, Cordell.
Yes, definitely.
Lori?
Hi. As far as we, the, we won't have too much problem getting people to man the polls. We didn't have any problem when we had the presidential election. Everybody felt safe and were comfortable. If we do it the same way, I don't think we'll have any issues.
What do you think for a town meeting environment, Lori? Do you think you'll have any issues, or were there any concerns over the summer?
There were no, there were no concerns over the summer dealing with a town meeting. And it's not like we need a lot of people for town meeting. It's not like with a general ballot voting. Because typically for, for a town meeting, we only have two books, so the supervisors can man a book. The only thing would be if we, if we had like a secret ballot or something like that, we might need a couple of extra people, but other than that, I think we'll be fine.
Leon?
Can I ask, Lori, if, if we end up having the town election on March 9th, and then the school board election sometime in April or May, do you think there'll be any problem staffing that second election? It wouldn't, I don't think we'd need nearly as many people as we had at the presidential or even at the town election, but we would still need some people.
Yeah, I don't think we'll have any problem manning a school board election either.
Okay.
About additional costs, what's the additional cost to do two events versus one?
Well, as I said, I, I, I think that I heard the superintendent say that if they, if they had their election separate from ours, they would, they would expect to pay for it.
Good.
Which I think they should, it's their election. I don't, don't, well, you can quote me if you want, but my decision, obviously, but I think they would pay for it.
Other questions from the board?
Well, I'm, Peter hasn't said anything yet, so I'm interested to see what his take is.
Well, you know, I have to tell you, and I'm, I want to be honest with you. My comments come as a town administrator, probably even more than as a selectman. And I, I'm going through the same thing down in the town I work in, and I have been telling the board for several weeks now how, how we're going to do this on the day that it was planned, which was deliberative. We're on SB 2, and so is in our school district. And I was all set, telling, you know, lining up the protocol for COVID. Had people volunteer just to take temperatures, take names and all that stuff. We were going to that route. And we generally get about 80 to 100 people at deliberative, and we only use about a third of the gym. So I wanted to have the entire gym open, and I'm just giving you a little history of where I'm coming from here. I wanted the entire gym open, we're gonna, we had it all figured, we were going to space it. And then, all of a sudden in the last week, all kinds of opposition came out of the woodwork, including from my, at least one of my selectmen. And the town moderator has gone on record as not favoring keeping it as scheduled next week and scheduling it out. Personally, I am upset that they're thinking that way. Upset here in Henniker that they would change it. I want to see things go as good. I don't think it's going to get better in the next three or four months, and it is next week. So Tia brought up some points about budgeting, and that's my psyche right now, too. And I think that my support will be to continue the schedule as originally planned, and that is, whenever, I don't know the date offhand, but not to delay it. That's, that's how I feel.
March 9th.
Yeah.
So that's just, that's the ballot part of it. What do you guys want to do with town meeting? Like, I know we have Wayne. You know, if we can check in with him again about using the ice arena, but regardless, what are your thoughts? I think with the amount of people that we got last year and knowing the historical averages, I think we would be fine in the gym, especially knowing a lot of, you know, some people stood outside, like the department heads. I don't know what your thought?
There's two parts. I'm totally in favor of keeping the ballot on March 9th. The deliberative session, which is scheduled for March 13th. My, my gut reaction says that we should delay it a month.
No.
But I'm not super wedded to that idea either. So I just think the more time, the more people, whatever.
And you don't.
You're going to make a decision, and you're going to be vilified either way, so it doesn't matter.
Leon, your thinking is go for the dates all the way across the board that we had originally planned, correct?
And that's partly based on the fiasco we had last year. All we, all we accomplished last year by putting off the meeting and putting off the meeting, then having a screwed up one, and then coming back for another one. We accomplished pushing major projects way too late in the year. We had too much budget uncertainty on all the warrant articles. The big thing is the warrant articles. And I think that it's, we've got a schedule where we vote on Tuesday, we meet on Saturday. I don't think that putting the Saturday meeting off for a month and a half is going to make any difference in the attendance. As a matter of fact, if you put it off toward the summer, people have got other things to do instead of coming to this. That's one of the reasons why March worked so good.
Right, and the other thing that we've got to think about is we have that bond, that 3.2 million, right, for wastewater, and we've got to vote on that to secure an interest rate. Am I correct, Joe?
Yeah, so if we're going to go through the bond bank, and then nothing says we have to, but we want to keep our options open to get the best interest rate we can, on the bond bank, there's two sales a year, once in the summer and once in the winter. In order to hit the July sale, we need to have everything submitted by April 30th from the bond bank to be considered. So if we miss that April 30th deadline, we miss the opportunity to use the bond bank.
And I'll just throw it out there for Cordell, there's nothing we can legally do before we publish the warrant and all the stuff to put the sewer ballot on with the regular vote?
Yeah, can we do that, Cordell, since it is going to have to be a ballot vote anyway?
And the question is, can you put the, can you put the bond on the ballot for March 9th? Nope. It has to be voted on at the business session.
Okay.
Well, that's when you anticipate a lot of argument over, so probably have a lot of people pissed off at us if we don't give them the chance to argue about that split.
Well, they can argue with us at the next meeting, too, you know.
I'd rather see it down at town meeting.
Yeah, I'm just saying it would probably be more representative of what the town wants to do with the ballot vote versus the town meeting, just.
Yeah.
Well, we're just going to have to be strict on the time limit for that discussion, then.
Yeah.
Again, you, you don't, I mean, it sounds like everyone wants to go forward on March 9th, and there are different views on the business session. You don't need to, you don't need to make a decision tonight.
Well, is, so for the people that are attending, Joe, I don't know if the board would agree with us, since these are folks that usually do attend our meetings, if we could just ask for their input, or if they want to make a comment on which way they would prefer, just so we can get some feedback. So if anybody has a comment or a suggestion on which way we should go, please put your hand up and we'll unmute you. I see Bill Marco and Heidi.
All right, I'm going to do Heidi first.
Go ahead, Heidi.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep. I think as a whole, we struggle with participation at town meeting anyway. Any kind of public gathering, COVID or not. And I would be hopeful that if you put the voting day, the day it's supposed to be, that the school would follow suit, because it seems kind of counterproductive to COVID protocols to make people go out twice instead of once. But again, back to town meeting, I think when you change what's historically been the timeframe, I agree with Tia, that confusion, you lose people. I think we need to stay status quo. I, I agree with others that say, I don't think I'm going to, we're going to see a huge change between now and May in, you know, statistics, et cetera, that I think we just need to practice safe protocols and move forward, get this.
Thank you. All right, are we all in agreement that March 9th for the vote?
Bill Marco has.
Oh, go ahead, Bill.
Okay, can you hear me, guys?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I concur with Heidi. And Leon made some great points. There's not going to be an event that happens that's going to change, you know, the virus and how people are going to come out. It's going to be the same throughout these next few months. So it's just going to add confusion. It doesn't work out well when we try to have several more meetings. So I'm all for keeping the regular schedule and doing our best to keep it a safe meeting.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's bite this elephant two times. Is everybody good with March 9th?
Yes.
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 No.
No. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote for holding the voting on March 9th. Chris Blombach, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Peter?
Yes.
Motion carries for one. Deliberative session for town meeting, or town meeting, business portion. Sorry, Jones. I've had school on the brain.
Chris, you're freezing up.
What's that?
You're freezing up.
I'm freezing up. So what do we want to do about the, the business portion of the meeting on the 13th?
Hold it.
Following Saturday.
Following Saturday. Tia?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah, I think if we have the one, the first one on the two, the following Saturday.
You froze half.
As Heidi said, people will forget.
You froze halfway through your statement, you want to just repeat so for clarity? Scott?
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense. If we're going to have the meeting on Tuesday, follow it up the following weekend.
Okay, and I think it's, do we have to do a roll call vote, Cordell, to make it official? Or are you good by consent?
I would do a roll call, Chris.
Roll call, Chris, yes.
Tia, yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Motion carries five, nothing.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Cordell.
Sure.
Does that, uh, that work for you, Cordell?
Your, your wish is my command.
But you have the final authority.
No, he doesn't on this one.
Well, technically, the existing law is still in effect. I could postpone it, but I am not going to go against a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Peter, I knew he still had the power and the authority.
I, I think that the governing body has now with the governor's order. He took it away from the, from Cordell.
In any event, I'm happy to cede the power to you, whether I need to or not.
No argument, anyway, but.
It's sort of bipartisanship, I like. Good stuff. All right. Anything else, Cordell, while we have you here?
Oh, that's all.
All right. Circling back to the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make them to approve.
Okay, a motion by Vice Chair Hooper, seconded by Selectman Parker. Roll call vote. Chris, yes. Tia, Leon.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Motion carries five, nothing. Uh, next up on the agenda, agenda item is number two, vacation time buyback, which is page eight for those playing home version.
I just real quick on the consent agenda, um, that was sent through DocuSign. If you haven't signed it yet, can you please make sure you do? Uh, we have a couple intent to cuts that are in there and we're closing in on the date that they're due. So if you haven't checked your email to sign that consent agenda, can you please make sure you do it? Sorry.
We're good.
Uh, so vacation time. I brought this up during one of the last meetings. I wanted to circle back. Um, one of the things the board has been consistently looking for me to do is try to get our vacation time on pay stubs so that employees have a, a knowledge and understanding of where they sit with vacation time, sick time, things like that. Uh, moving to the paycheck, outsourcing that essentially, we do have that ability. A couple of things are holding us off. We're kind of chipping away at each, each one, one at a time. Um, and the next piece is we have employees that are currently sitting on overage of their allowed vacation time. They're only allowed to hold one year's worth. So if they accrue 80 hours, they can only have 80 hours in the bank. Once they hit their anniversary date, anything over that, they were technically lose. You know, and speaking to the board, one of the concerns that we've had is just taking away all of this time from people because they may not know where they actually sit because we don't give them it on their paycheck. They get it once a quarter, once, you know, it's sporadic, let's just say. And per our policies, it very clearly states that we're supposed to give them notice six weeks before their anniversary date if they're gonna be losing any time. Uh, in an attempt to try to clean this up a little bit, I wanted to bring it to the board to see if they'd be willing to buy back anybody who is currently in an overage. If you look at the sheet that I gave you, we currently have nine employees that have an overage. And they range from, you know, 12 hours to as high as 93 hours. To buy everybody's overage right now, that would cost $12,884. And that would bring everybody to where they're supposed to be. Uh, and we can then, at that point, start enforcing the policy as written and notifying them if they have an overage, things like that. Uh, I can tell you with speaking to a couple of these individuals, their anniversary date is later in the summer and they think they're gonna be using some of it as well. So I think, you know, if the board was to do this, it's a one-time option for these, for the employees at this impact. They get this opportunity. If they choose not to take it and come July, they haven't had their opportunity, it, it's a lost cause since the board's given them that chance to clean up the books for lack of a better term. You know, some of them may want to take a piece in a piece and I, I, again, I don't think there's anything wrong with that if that's how they choose. If they're sitting on, let's say, 59 hours and they want to buy, they know they're gonna be using a week in March. And so the board then only has to buy 19 hours. I think that's a good opportunity as well. But again, I think it's a one, once and done. If after this point, anybody who's over, we need to be able to clean the books up. So I'm looking for the board to authorize this to move forward.
I have a quick question. Um, I just want to make sure that this is gonna be coming out of the remaining 2020 operational budget and not being applied to the 2021.
Russ was going to be attempting that. Um, I don't know where he's at. Uh, like he's on this call, but I don't know if he's, I think he's on his phone, so I don't know if he can talk. We just.
Russ is here.
Yeah. I don't think he can talk though, because of the way he's.
He's raising his hand.
I've asked him to unmute, so.
Am I there?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the answer to your question is, is unfortunately I can't take payroll. Um, I can't date payroll this year and charge it to last year's budget because it wouldn't tie out with our payroll tax returns. There may be a possibility to encumber a, a, a amount that equals that to pull that off, but it, it is, um, it would be unusual to do that. But not impossible.
Well, it is unusual.
Well, I would be tempted to do that since this, these hours were accrued within the 2020 cycle or, or before that and it should not be hitting our 2021 budget.
I would say that if the board directs me to do it, then that would give me the authority I could use to push it through the system.
Let me ask you this. Instead of paying out, if you just extend the time, could we burn up the vacation that way? If you expand the window for them to use it up?
What, what we need to do, Chris, is we need to get these numbers into a position so we can then put them in the system so we can start reporting out to all employees on their vacation and sick time. If we hold off on doing this, we are just making the situation worse because once again, they're not gonna have regular updates on where they stand with vacation and sick.
And, and the other problem you do run into doing that is there's still accruing time as well. So they're adding more to their balance, especially when we look at, let's say, police, the police department who has two people in the academy right now. They're not in a situation where they can really be taking time off and they're not gonna be for a while. To, to start adding extra on top of it, you know? I think if they know they need to keep up with it, the chief can make the accommodations. You know, I think Heidi made a comment. It, it's cheaper though to pay this out and pay somebody overtime to cover shift for them to take a day off if we force them. So.
Yeah, I think it's, it's one of those things where we need to get it cleaned up. And any of the things that people have suggested, other than paying for it, just makes the situation dragged out more or more complex.
Yeah. So, so Joe, um, does, does every employee have a two week vacation? That they can carry over?
And they, they can carry over however much time they're allowed to accrue. So if they've been here under five years, they can carry two weeks on the books.
And we'll be discussing that further down the line after we get through this budget cycle when, um, we start discussing potential PTO. Which would kind of standardize everything and make everything 10 times easier for everybody.
The other question I had is if you don't have the mechanism in place to show the hours and we cut these checks out, we're gonna be right back in the same boat six months from now.
My, my hope is, you know, is it by doing this and Russ, I don't know if you can still unmute yourself because you've spoken to the payroll company a couple of times. This is one of the last really hangups that we have to deal with.
It's gonna, it would become a formula situation, so it would be necessary to get these numbers manageable so that the payroll company, I believe, when you then get to a threshold where you have more time than what has been programmed, you get a notice, hey, you've got eight hours at risk or hey, you've got five hours at risk. And they need to deal with that. So I think that was part of the mechanism. There's not only the reporting, but the ability to enforce. Um, and I do believe that there are notices, although we have not set that part of the system up yet, so we are, uh, we'll have to see exactly what options we have. But I do believe that was the, that was the idea with the system that, uh, it would be able to flag somebody that has an issue.
So should we make this payout contingent upon making that record-keeping active?
Well, the, the employees are still gonna be notified if they're getting close to their overage every week when they get paid on their pay slip.
Right, that, that notice, once we implement it into the system, we will, uh, they will be notified every week of, of any changes in their, uh, in their vacation, whether they advance, uh, the month and get another day or, um, however, however we program it in. I understand we have some pretty good control over it.
Russ, is it gonna though proactively tell the employee or is it just gonna start stalling on their paycheck?
Uh, what do you mean proactively telling him?
Employee hits that timeframe where they're not gonna be accruing anymore. Is, is, is it just gonna be reflected on the paycheck?
Oh, oh.
It's gonna be like a message generated that says, hey, you're not.
No, they will continue to accrue time. What will happen is time will be taken away. You will, you will get a formula that says you cannot exceed 120 hours. So when you go to 121, the system, I'm, I'm hoping it's gonna give you a notice that says, hey, in 30 days or whatever time the policy has on it, you're gonna lose this day unless you take it.
Joe, you had a comment?
Well, no, I think even from the town standpoint, I think I, I have no problem keeping an eye on that and making sure that when we hit that six, six week mark, which is what the policy states, sending a letter saying you're gonna have time at Jeffrey, you need to take care of it.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just afraid if the accruing is passive and it doesn't let the employee know that they're not accruing anymore, they could get into a situation where eight, 10 weeks down the road, they're like, how come my hours haven't changed? And then all of a sudden we're right back in the same boat.
Well, and this is the key component. So now that they're gonna be actively getting their accrual balances and on a weekly basis, every time their check is cut, it should really be the employee's responsibility to monitor their hours. Um, and then, you know, we have to effectively communicate that policy, which I think Joe is, you know, has done or has started to do, implement the policy. Um, that's kind of been disregarded for quite some time. So I think with these key pieces, I think we are okay and we're, we're reducing the liability.
Okay. Peter.
Yes. Uh, going back to what Tia said about, um, taking, uh, any payroll out of last year's budget. I first lit up and agreed 100%. And then when Russ said we, we couldn't do that for certain reasons and that he could go back and take it out of maybe some other town or make it work. I, I really feel that we, we shouldn't fool around with that payroll stuff. We should really take it out of payroll and we should take it out of this year. If we have to over expend over 12,000, which I don't think would happen, I really think we're safe in taking that buyback out of the 2021 budget.
That's fine. I just, I want to make sure that the, the tracking mechanism is active so that we're not back in the same boat six months from now.
Yeah. So we haven't closed the books on 2020. Am I correct, Russ?
That is correct. We are, we are still processing invoices.
Open.
I'm sorry?
Our books are technically still open and we could issue corrected tax documents to those employees that might be impacted. Am I, am I correct?
No. Well, no, because the money would not, corrected tax documents would imply that you are, uh, that you, uh, misstated what happened in 2020. So we would not be restating, um, at this point and, um, the IRS is gonna start accepting tax returns in 12 days. So I, I'm thinking that, that, that wouldn't happen.
Plus W2s have already gone out.
Right.
But what we could do is do an accrual out of the 2020 budget, have it impact 2021. You know, just like what we would do with an encumbrance for, say, fired apartment buys a piece of equipment and it hasn't come, come yet.
There's no tax involved in that, Tia. It's easier to do that. There's no taxes involved.
Yeah. All we would be doing is, is bringing in a gross appropriation from 20 to 21. And that's why I say that, that is something that typically I can do. It does not, it does not fit into the standard criteria until you involve the authority of the Board of Selectmen. And you do have complete control over those finances. And as I said, if you order me to do that, then that's what will happen.
Started out before Tia mentioned using 2020, I was gonna make a suggestion that we consider that. And after the discussion that we've been through, I think it's inappropriate. And I reflect back on some of the times when I worked in a more complex situation. I'd probably ended up with, that's serious issues with the audit if we had, if I had done that. So I, I agree with Russ and Peter that this $12,000 needs to come out of 2021. If, if it's acceptable to you, Chris, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
We authorize the town administrator to purchase vacation time back to the employees currently at risk of losing vacation time. The amount of the buyback is not to exceed the amount they are at the risk of losing, which appears to currently be $12,884.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Parker, seconded by Selectman Flynn. Ready to call the roll call vote? Chris Blombach, yes.
Yeah, Hooper, yes.
Leon.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Motion carries five, nothing. Let's please not get into this situation again. Okay, moving along. Item number three, everybody's favorite topic, budget. You gave out some updates. Do you want to just kind of give us a brief 20,000 foot view of where everything's at right now?
Sure. Um, so the warrant that's included in your packet is the recommendation that came out of the CIP. Um, and then the operating budget that you already heard about, there's been some changes, um, to it based off of things that have happened from November through now. Um, things like the longevity pay that was passed, things like that. So we've updated those documents. I did send those out to the board, um, so you can look at that as a reference. Um, to give everybody just a kind of an idea. If the budget was, if you were to move forward with a warrant as presented, um, right now, uh, basically we're looking at a $2.16 tax increase.
No.
Yep.
Stop right there. So that number, when I looked at it, has the 2019 figure, not the 2020?
For the valuation?
Uh.
Unless the formula was wrong, because on, on the top of that requested budget sheet, he's used, we're using the 471, 798. So unless the formula was wrong in that.
So if you look at the 2019, when you're doing the comparison, we should actually be using the 2020, uh, figure, the tax rate figure.
All right. So I'm asking Russ to unmute again since he did this report. Well, Russ, I'm muted off the current, I mean, the, the sheet that I have, this is what we're, we're coming up with. So we'll see what.
I'm, I, I don't understand. Where are we looking that we see the 2009 rate?
No, I'll pull it up. Hold on.
I think what Tia is referencing, if you look in the bottom of that sheet, Russ, I don't know if you have it in front of you. Under the 2021 tax rate totals, it says 2019 tax rate totals. Um, it was 994 is what it's referencing. Is that what you're talking about, Tia?
The tax rate for 2020 was 994.
Oh, it's just a labeling error.
Right. I, I, I corrected it on some of the later sheets. I, I, and now I remember what you're talking about and that is just a labeling error.
So according, again, according to the sheet that we have in front of us, um, we're currently, we had a $2.16 increase, uh, which would make the 2021 tax rate total at $12.10 for the municipal side of things. My suggestion to the board is obviously is to go through the warrant. We're gonna want to make, you're gonna want to make votes so I can decide if Selectmen recommend or not as well, um, so that we can reflect that properly in the warrant. Uh, currently, just because it's, um, for housekeeping, it already says Selectmen recommend. That obviously can be modified, things like that. So you're gonna want to probably go through piece by piece. And if there's any order changes that you want to the warrant, you're gonna want to make those as well now so that we have the warrant, uh, proper order for the budget hearings next week.
So I do have a quick question, since there is a article on there. That has not really been discussed and there was no figure amount. I believe it's article 22.
Yep. And I, I believe Susan Adams is here to speak to that, um, article. So basically they're looking to use, uh, funds out of one of their trust funds to pay, to work on this. Again, if you remember during the last meeting, I spoke to the board and the TA reported about some issues on the riverbank with erosion. So they're looking to try to rectify that situation. Um, so they're looking to use money out of the trust fund to pay for that. I just, we had given her a call from the town side to give her an idea of what we estimated the cost to be. She did just send me a, a quote from an engineer as well. Susan's hand is up if you're okay with me unmuting her or do you want to wait till we get to that article? It's up to the board how you want to proceed.
Well, Tia from the board brought it up, so we might as well. Well, Tia from the board brought it up, so we might as well address it. So if you can unmute Susan.
Everything okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, Susan.
Okay. Um, I will tell you that the purpose of that warrant article is to solve the problem um, of the riverbank erosion and safety at Azalea Park. Uh, we had an appointment with the Army Corps and Tom Ballastero last March. And of course, this was canceled due to the COVID and we were unable to meet again until this late fall. We took their recommendations, um, to Joe, uh, to advise us, uh, to advise them, everyone of the safety issues. And we voted to change the course of our warrant article, which we had previously written regarding wetland delineation to address the riverbank and path erosion because it's a really an emergency situation. So we have been getting planning ideas and estimates since then. Uh, riverbank erosion has been at the core of our larger plan of work, uh, but this particular section uh, has received a great deal of use uh, during the pandemic and because of the warm summer uh, and needs immediate attention. The usual erosion was multiplied by the removal of the fence. And those responsible for its removal have completed a court ordered reimbursement. And the replacement fence is under the park department's care at present. The goal is to stop the erosion in this area and repair the path and get the fence back up for safety of people just passing through. Uh, we're meeting with the trustees of the trust tomorrow to put this proposal uh, before them in the hopes of being able to use the funds earmarked for Azalea Park in the Cogswell Trust. There is no impact on the tax, on taxes, and we do not know the amount available until tomorrow's meeting. Uh, the money from the trust will go towards permits, plans and other engineering costs, um, site surveys, uh, permit applications, bid documents, um, et cetera. Um, the estimate from Streamworks, who is Tom Ballastero, and he's been our advisor throughout this, is eleven thousand dollars. Um, and we hope to involve any see-through Sachi's sustainability classes in planting the riverbank, uh, so that it doesn't erode. Uh, we have one estimate for an emergency repair of the walkway, um, from Leo. But it does not include permitting, plant work and possible impact fees. Um, so we're working very hard. We apologize that we do not have the figures. Um, I, I miss being able to walk into town hall and know what's going on. Um, I hate this soon stuff, but um, this is, this is, uh, we hope you will approve this, um, this warrant article for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Go ahead, Leon.
It seems to me if she's gonna have a figure in the next week, uh, let me ask Joe the question, is there any reason why we have to deal with this tonight? Can't we deal with it as a separate issue at our next selectmen's meeting after we have a figure? I, let me back up and say, I'm totally against doing anything to recommend or not recommend if we don't have a figure of what we're talking about. So let's just put that last item off. And we'll decide next meeting.
My concern with that, Leon, is that we're having the public hearing on the budget next week. Um, if you put it off, we're gonna end up having a second public hearing to deal with one, that one or, one warrant article. Um, my, my, you know, my issue is, is, you know, I I've had conversations with Susan, I told her she should have came before the board before moving forward so that the board was aware of this warrant article so that you kind of had more information. Um, she actually has a meeting with the trustees tomorrow to find out if it's an approved, um, use of the money, which most likely isn't speaking to Russ and then speaking to Lori. Um, but, you know, i- it's my opinion that, you know, she really should have came to the board, spoke about the warrant article, the board would have said, yeah, we agree with this, let's find out if it's an approved use through the trust. She would have went to the trustees af- after seeking your approval. Uh, it just seems like we're doing things backwards. Um, you know, the quote that she did get, just so we're aware, it is eleven thousand for engineering services. It's also twenty four thousand for the bank stabilization work. Um, so the eleven thousand that we're referencing is just the engineering. The, um, the total in the trust, just so again, so you have all the numbers. Um, there's six thousand three hundred and eighty nine dollars in the fund plus fourteen hundred dollars from trustees. So basically, they have seven thousand seven hundred eighty nine dollars according to Russ in that trust funds right now. Um, so even with the, we're looking at just the engineering services, they're still short. Um, and I don't know how Susan plans on coming up with the difference. So that's, that's just my, my, just so the board has the factual information as far as the numbers go. Um, you know, and again, if we, I I always hear no taxpayer dollars and I don't, you know, this warrant article, the idea was through no taxation. Um, at twenty seven thousand dollars, just so the board has an idea, that's six cents if we were to use it on the tax rate.
Oh, uh, Susan has a rebuttal, I think.
Sorry. Uh, we generally, for all of the projects we've done, uh, we have raised funds for them. And, um, the trustee, uh, the account, the Cogswell grant has always just been a part of that. Um, it doesn't mean that we will spend twenty four thousand dollars, um, on that. But it, it's an estimate that we got from one of them, and we certainly would have it go out to bid. And the fact that we have an estimate for fixing the pathway, uh, would take some of the pressure off and give us some time uh, to raise the rest of the funds. Once we have an improved, uh, an approved plan. So that's another thing, our meeting, um, our committee's meeting on Thursday to decide how we go forward. And, um, that's all I can say, but it surely would help us, um, to meet some of these demands.
So Susan, to be clear, uh, and to further Leon's point, in a week's time, we'll have a little more clarity on what your specific request is.
Um, yes, because I would be asking for whatever money the trustees tell us and approve.
Okay. Alright, I think, uh, it's probably, we have enough, uh, go ahead, Peter.
Yes, I I'd like to, um, say that I have a problem with a committee going direct to the trustees of the trust funds. I would have thought the selectmen would have had some information on that and endorsed them doing that. And I'm not sure the authority is there for separate committees in town to just go to the, go to the trustees at trust funds and meet with them and come back with uh, recommendation. I just, I'm just thinking that as we're talking here. Just a comment.
Yeah.
Well, can I speak to that?
Absolutely.
Um, Joe already mentioned that, that I'm doing this back asswards. And, um, one of the years, the first time we ever went to the, um, oh, it was way back, I think, two thousand seventeen, uh, we went to the trustees, we, we did not go for a warrant. We just went to the trustees and we had been talking with the selectmen at the same time. But now it's a different process and I am aware of this process. And again, I apologize because um, I just was out of the loop for the timeframe.
Hey, just to to answer that, just so you're aware, so there's, there's two different trusts that we're talking about. The, one of the trusts has to go through the town meeting vote, which is the Cogswell Trust. The other trust, the selectmen have the ability to withdraw out of, it doesn't need to go to a town meeting vote. And I think that's, that's the difference. So depending on what trust she was utilizing will determine which avenue she has to take, because we're going through the Cogswell Trust, that has to go through a town meeting vote.
Okay. Further questions on the issue of Azalea Park, or should we table it till next week?
Uh, Lori Marco has her hand up, Chairman.
Yeah, she's on the trustees of the trust fund.
Okay, go ahead, Lori, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Um, so regarding our meeting tomorrow night with, with Azalea Park Committee, um, we are only going to be dealing with the Azalea Park Trust Fund and not the Cogswell Trust Fund. Am I correct?
Not my understanding.
That's what I'm trying to get a clarification, which now, as Joe just said, that the Cogswell one needs to go before the, the town.
I, I think what you, I think the trustees still have to determine if that's an approved use of the trust. Even though, even though it goes to town meeting, the trustees are gonna make that determination. And then if it is, the board can decide if they're gonna put it on the one.
Okay. And, and you show me which Cogswell trust this is, because I have several on here and I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
Again, I, I, did, did, I thought Russ showed it to you today.
Well, the one that, that he showed me today was the D and W Cogswell, and the one on the warrant is an, um, LA Cogswell.
I will have to check with Russ on that, because he.
Okay.
Good, Joe, can we take that off, uh, off committee and put it to private conversation to let Lori know the intricacies of that as well as Susan?
Yep.
Because I think we got a, a fair amount of stuff in front of us tonight as well, and, uh,
That's fine.
Certainly seeking financial clarity. It looks like we'll have a better picture of what everybody's asking for in a week's time if I, if I'm understanding the conversation correct. So, thank you, Lori. Tia, are you satisfied with the discussion on this issue?
I have the answers I needed. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so let's, uh, return to further budget deliberations. Um, now is the time in the next couple of weeks to make budget adjustments, so happy to hear of any recommendations from anybody. Not hearing any, I'll dive right into it. You guys know that I'm a fiscal hawk. So if nobody has any objections, I'll go. Okay. Uh, Joe, can you give me screen sharing capability? I have it disabled online.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can everybody see this budget?
No, hang on, it's not. Oh. Right now, Chris.
I don't have a question yet. Yeah, there we go. Okay, can everybody see this, uh, Excel spreadsheet? For those that are following the home game, a reminder that a dollar in cost is four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in expense cut. Uh, Russ, if I misspeak or misspoke on any details here, would you please? Chime up. So we have a budget that's been presented. We've made a few adjustments here and there. Uh, everybody's received the summary sheets. Again, a dollar in tax rate is four hundred and seventy thousand in expenses. Really nothing too controversial here. This is the operating budget up here. Uh, this is the, um, historical revenues that are associated with certain line items on the budget. We have the capital reserves and warrant articles as presented by the CIP Committee. And, uh, this is, I think everybody's just really aware of this. So the two thousand twenty one tax rate is twelve dollars and ten cents. That will be up twenty one percent over last year, twenty twenty tax rate. And the year before that, we were up sixteen percent. So I know that the budget is a three dimensional chess game with many inputs and many outputs. So if the board pleases, I will go with the operating budget first and then address capital budgets. We've all been through the operating budget in minute details. And at this point in time, I would also like to thank the Budget Advisory Committee for their hard work in uncovering some cost benefits that we potentially may deploy if we have the votes tonight. Um, primarily, uh, this is, this sheet that we're looking at is the same document that we were looking on sheet number one. The proposed adjustments that I will be advocating here are in the red column. And to go down line by line on this, uh, the code enforcement budget goes from six thousand eight hundred to fifty four thousand. I'm, uh, proposing a fifteen thousand dollar cut, which basically removes the secretarial position from that so that the budget would be thirty nine thousand. Uh, solid waste, thanks to the Budgetary Advisory Committee. Uh, also identified, uh, about fourteen thousand dollars in savings for the Hennecker Beautification Committee. And, uh, we would add back twenty five hundred as well as add single stream recycling to some of the analysis for a net decrease of the transfer station of fifty two hundred dollars. That would basically not allocate any money for the Hennecker Beautification Committee, but give them a little bit of money to remain an informal committee that they can submit bills to, to the tune of about twenty five hundred dollars, more or less what they did last year. Uh, the waste, the solid waste transfer station would also adopt single stream recycling, which would garner us additional savings. And, uh, that's about it for that. Um, Red Cross is a new ask for money, as much as I appreciate and everything that the Red Cross does do, thousand dollars. Uh, we cannot afford even the programs that we are currently doing, so I'm not interested really in advocating to take on new spending. The Hennecker Beautification Committee, I am a huge fan of the work they are doing downtown. I think that those folks are doing a fantastic job. Um, however, I'd like to uh, keep it the way it's been funded for the last year. Uh, also, the, the, um, library, the Budget Advisory Committee identified three hundred and fifty dollars in savings for the Fuller Library, and that was new funding. So grand total of three thousand, uh, thirty six thousand four hundred and seventy nine dollars. Again, this is on the operating side of the budget. So that brings the tax rate from two dollars sixteen cent increase to two dollars and eight cents. Uh, obviously, we know that that's not a big market mover. Um, so that's my presentation regarding the operating budget. I think we've gone line by line on that, and I think I feel very comfortable that the Budget Advisory Committee came up with some savings. The select board has gone on through this budget, line by line. And there really isn't a lot of fat on the bone here, folks. There just really isn't. It's the operating budget. It's about running as lean as we can. So, but I am still proposing about thirty six thousand dollars in cuts, and I hope when I'm done with my little presentation here that, uh, you folks support it.
Can you scroll up a bit so I can see the top part of the sheet?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay. So, solid waste is going down five thousand two hundred and fourteen.
Yeah, so that would be a combination of adding twenty five hundred dollars back into them for the Hennecker Beautification and adopting single stream.
Um, wasn't single stream a cost?
No, single stream was the lowest cost, if I recall the analysis.
It's, it's a cheaper cost.
Yeah, Russ, if you can hold off so Chris can go through his presentation, because I have a proposal after Chris, and these aren't gonna be final numbers yet.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. Okay, so that's the operating side of things, thirty six thousand four seventy nine. Uh, capital improvements, that is the next column. And I gotta move the zoom screen here. Okay. So traditionally, the board has done a pretty good job of establishing capital reserves, usually first by So traditionally, the board has done a pretty good job of establishing capital reserves, usually first by the addition of a dollar and then slowly ramping them up. We've had the opportunity to have the fire truck and roughly $100,000 in cost come off the books this past year. So you can see that in 2016, we had approximately 246,000, and we've slowly been ramping it up to 1,091,000 last year, I was recommended. This chart shows what areas are being increased and what areas are being decreased. I took these numbers here from the proposed CIP funding levels. And I'd like to do a shout out to Tia and the Budget Advisor, the Capital Improvements Committee for putting together a very well thought out document regarding sustainability for capital expenditures for the town going forward. I think you'll find that we may have some disagreement on some of the level funding amounts, but those are going to be arguments on the perimeter and the margins, not necessarily the concept of putting money away for capital reserves. So this is kind of a synopsis of from 2016 to 2020, what the Select Board has done. This column here is what the Capital Improvements Committee is proposing for the upcoming year. I had a chance to dive into the numbers and do a detailed analysis on some of the funds that were established for capital reserves. And first up is Fire, and this was presented in the the committee report, if you will, that was put together. They are recommending contributions of 50,000, 65, 80, 95, and slowly ramping up to 105. It shows a surplus of 63,343. And while that works on the numbers side of things, I think after speaking with the Fire Chief as well as other members, the updated costs for Fire, they were using old numbers that were asked to be corrected a year ago. They were not corrected, and there were some numbers in this upcoming season for the extraction tools that were not 100% accurate, as well as some discussion about possibly not obtaining the certain equipment that was necessarily forecasted out in 2030, but rather a more expensive piece of machinery. I don't want to put words in the chief's mouth that hasn't been identified yet. But regardless, you can see that we have a number here of 626, 626,000, which is the true accurate number to replace the freight liner. But in the initial assessment, it was only as a cost of 300,000. If you plug in also that the CSCBA is the scuba tanks in 2031 will be a $200,000 cost. If we were to go with the warrant reserves is written as 50, 65, and 85, 95,000, so on and so forth, we would have a systemic deficit in the Fire Department of 466,807. Whereas in the sheet that was prepared for us, it was initially showing a surplus. I think that was just an oversight, so I punched in the numbers there. And if with the, if the Select Board deems that the $100,000 is the contribution we wish to make, you can see that for the next four years, if we return to the contributions of what we've historically funded the Fire Department with at $100,000 per year, using the new updated numbers as well as the, the scuba tanks that will be scheduled for replacement in 2031, we are dealing with a surplus of approximately 28,000. So I would argue against reducing the $100,000 fire equipment reserve down to 50,000, and I would argue that we should keep it at the $100,000 level. So my proposed adjustments for the rest of the capital budgets and the ETFs, if you will, this is again the column that we have historically funded these areas on. This is what the column is recommending from the CIP Committee. These are the proposed adjustments that I'm advocating. I'll go down through these line by line. The Technology Fund was funded at $25,000 last year. The CIP is recommending 125,000. I believe that we could walk, you know, we need to crawl, walk and run on all of these capital reserves. I think that still adding $75,000 to the capital reserve budget for technology is a very positive step. We have a police department that is going to be funded from 50,000 to 100,000. I'm advocating a $50,000 cut to that area so that we fund it at the historic level of what the Select Board has chosen for the last few years of 50,000. Police equipment ETF reduced it by $5,000, but still showing positive traction going from 2,500 to 5,000. And town owned buildings would go from 5,000 to 20,000. That would reduce the road maintenance by ETF of, from 750 to 150,000 to 600,000. That could be achieved on the Old Hillsborough Road in conversation with members of the CIP Committee. That could be a two part pave job similar to Western Ave. We also.
That already, that already is, Chris.
The 750,000 includes, if I understand the conversation, was the completion of the Old Hillsborough Road.
No.
Do I have that incorrect, Joe?
Yes, because it was corrected during the discussion.
The quote from GMI has Old Hillsborough Road from PJ just past Western Ave to the town line, so it's 609,000 for Western Ave to the town line.
Right, so if we cut that in half, it would be 305,000.
No, Chris, it won't be 305,000 because the additional cost that it's going to take, which is outlined in the Road Management Committee Report, you're actually costing us more money when you break up the road like that. And we also have to go out for additional bids, but continue with your presentation, and I'm sure Leon and I will have a few things to say.
Very good. Revaluation is cut from 25,000 to 5,000, and the capital reserve for the Fire Department is restored to its full 100,000, which has been historical regarding the level of funding that is needed to make sure that that stays on track. If you do a, an analysis here, we have debt coming off the books of close to $100,000, 60,000 in 2022, and close to 40,000 in 2025. So, let me see. So if you take the proposed cuts in the operating budget and the proposed cuts in the warrants, we can get down to $11.57. So the only thing I wanted to add was that the Highway Department had about $2.3 million in assets that needed to be replaced, and the Fire Department is approaching 4 million. So the one that I really would like to see restored is the Fire Department from 50,000 to 100,000. And in talking with the Fire Chief regarding the $50,000 contribution, he indicated that he was trying to do that as a service to the taxpayers, and he was not aware that that money would be reallocated to other areas. He was aware of the shortfall in highway equipment, but we are funding that at a very aggressive rate, going from 25,000 to 150,000. But he was not aware that that would be beefing up other funds. So therein is my.
So ju- just in regards to that, because Joe Devine, our town administrator, was also on that call along with a bunch of other members who are sitting on this call this evening. There was robust discussion with the Fire Chief, and we even put in the numbers to show him what we would be looking for over a five year span and what we would be doing with the Highway Department during that time. And he was in full agreement to that, so I'm a little concerned that you have gone to him to once again seek an increase of the 50,000 when you specifically told me to put it back in the thing after we presented to try to manipulate the situation, and I'm, I'm kind of concerned about that.
Okay, well, I attempted to look at any Zoom recordings or minutes of the meetings, and nothing has been posted from the CIP Committee in the last 12 months onto either the website or anything is hanging in town hall, so I had to kind of reverse engineer and recreate what was actually occurring in the meetings. So I apologize if I stepped out of line there, but I had no other alternatives than to go and seek people that were part of those conversations, because there was no official record. So I'm happy to entertain. Any questions?
Just going back to the cut of the road construction of the road fund from 750 to 600. That basic bid that Joe read for from GBI is only for the paving and the work that they would be doing. It doesn't include all the engineering and the other stuff that's involved. And we're at a situation where rather than ask for more in order to do the whole of that Old Hillsborough Road section, we chose to keep the same level that the townspeople approved the last couple of years, so that 750 this year for that fund is not part of what's creating the gain or the increase in taxes.
Leon, I don't, I don't really dispute any of that. I, I know that the roads need attention, and I know that they need funding. But you know, the taxpayer base is finite in terms of its ability to pay. We're coming off of a pandemic. We have unemployment. We have a lot of people hurting in town. I've often argued that at my level and, and most of the other board members, we can make up some of these property tax increases. But there is a lot of people hurting in this town. There are a lot of people that are paycheck to paycheck, and their homes are very much in danger of I don't want to sound alarmist, but there, there's a lot of hurting people out there, and I see it every day. So I'm just, I'm not, I'm not necessarily advocating against the capital reserves. I'm a big proponent. I'm a big proponent of it. And I think we're arguing about the margins. We're not necessarily arguing about the meat of the, the meat and potatoes of it. We're doing that. I mean, we're still, even, even at my conservative estimate, we're still funding over a million dollars. So we're arguing about a couple $300,000 on a very proactive agenda. So I'm just saying, let's crawl, let's walk, let's run. But most importantly, let's return at least to the historic values that the Select Board has set for all of these reserves in the past and not be, no disrespect to the Police Department, but we're, we're funding the Police Department at $100,000 for a concept that isn't even in reality yet. Yet we have a Fire Department which very much has equipment that needs replacing, so that's kind of where I'm at.
Chris, the Fire Department has the best equipment across all town departments. And so I'm going to ask you a question, and I don't mean to be rude, but how many employees do you employ at Pax Peak that work for Fire or Rescue?
I have no idea. A lot.
A lot. Could this be a conflict of interest?
No, not really. They haven't actually even talked to me at the ski area about it.
But you utilize their services and you also utilize their employees.
I utilize a lot of town services. I use the Police Department. I use the Fire Department. I use Rescue Services. Further questions?
I, I, I think you missed.
I think it's a good start, Cliff.
Thank you, Scott. Questions, Peter?
I think it's a good start.
Thank you.
I think it's a good start, too. I mean, I'm concerned about the taxes, too, and your conclusion.
Things, well, we need to understand people that really do need the help of this.
I also.
All right, hang on, one at a time. Scott has the floor. Hold on, hold on, Peter. Peter, Scott. Go ahead, Scott.
No, I, I mean, you know, it's, it's nice to be able to have all of these things, but you know, there are a lot of people that do need a lot, a lot their attention, and we drive up the straight, we're really hurting a lot of people here. And we gotta be, that's gotta be number one for us, to make sure that what we're doing isn't hurting people instead of helping them.
Great, thank you. Peter?
Well, I was just going to repeat your, your conclusion. By the way, very well done on what you explained. I could follow it along by watching the screen rather than my attachments here tonight, but I think the effect on the taxpayer, all of a sudden, it's starting to be more important to me. I was a strong supporter year after year after year of pretty much anything that was requested by departments. I firmly believed in it. But I think that, you know, a $2.16 increase per thousand is pretty high, and I, and I think that I'd like to bring it down closer to where it was.
Yep.
Your 11.57 figure appealed to me.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't think we're arguing about the meat and potatoes of this. I think we're nibbling on the edges and the margins. You know, I think there's a lot about timing of how we institute these funds, and I think you know, the marketplace can better absorb a slower rate. And I know, trust me, I know that there's going to be people that disagree with this approach, and this is, this is, I'm, I'm one vote of five, so.
Well, I actually bigger cuts than you, Chris, because I got the rate lower than you did.
Perfect, let's hear it.
So if we're looking at town offices, since we do have some potential savings there, I'm recommending that we cut just $1,000. It's not a big deal, but we can find it. Let me screen share here for a second. I'm also recommending in code enforcement that we cut 25,000.
Tia, can you make that a little bigger? Or full screen?
You can, Chris.
You see it now?
I can't make her screen bigger. Yeah, there you go, that's better.
Okay, so cutting 25,000 in the code enforcement line.
And how do you, can you explain as you cut?
So with the code enforcement line, there was a budgeted item for part time secretarial services. So I only calculated the rate of hours that were being proposed for the code enforcement officer over the 52 weeks. So that was what is remaining.
Okay.
Solid waste, I'm recommending a cut of the 14,655. Same argument as you, Chris, of going to the single stream. Looking at the numbers, we had already increased that the bark mulch line by the, by the 2,000 that was being requested, so therefore I'm going to leave it at 14,000, a little over 14,000 being cut there. For athletics, they've already missed a partial season with basketball, so I'm asking for a cut of $10,000 for the athletic line just for this year because they haven't, they're not going to have full active sports come springtime. For the library, I did include the $14,000 cut that was proposed by the Budget Advisory Committee. For white birch, they did not pull any funds this year. And town meeting, we're already going to be partially wa- the way through. There might be some opportunity come the summertime for them to start meeting, but I'm going to reduce that line by half. I did agree with the Fuller Library cut of 350, Red Cross by 1,000, and beautification, subtracting out the 14,000, which comes into over $100,000 worth of cuts. For the warrant articles, the only thing that I'm willing to do is cut the 50,000 out of the Police Department budget. of the police department budget, the police department building line. And that is, that is a concession. But I am not willing to increase the fire department's line at this time. And that brings us down to 11.
With the mathematics that I showed on my spreadsheet regarding updated values?
Yep. And that brings us to 1122.
What's 1122?
That, that would be our portion.
Before we leave that screen, Tia.
Yep.
A question for Joe and Russ. Has there been any change in the block grant figure from the state? The reason I ask is that they, there have been a number of reports lately that the state was about where they had been before and that they didn't have anywhere near the reductions that we had anticipated. I, that's, that's hard to believe, given what's happened to the restaurant world. But somebody ought to reach back up the pipeline and see if that hundred thousand dollar figure is still the appropriate figure.
As of right now, the only numbers we're guaranteed are two. We have through, we have two payments coming up, one first quarter, second quarter essentially. And we know those are going to be roughly $30,000 each. So we have 60,000 guaranteed as of right now. So we don't know what's coming after that. So that's, that's the estimate that we don't really know. We know that we're typically at, you know, more than that. So we're anticipating some cut in that revenue.
But as long as we have that hundred thousand dollar figure in there, we can't use any more than a hundred thousand if we get it.
I believe, and I haven't.
The, the DRA will certainly allow us to use that. The hundred thousand was meant as an estimate, but whatever number that the state decides to give us, because we've passed that article, will be adjusted to the amount that they give us.
I think, I think I have a problem with that interpretation, but I like it. So I'll accept it.
I appreciate that, sir. But basically, when we are in this mode where we don't know the second half, we are basically held the spending out of that account to what we have received.
Yeah.
By the time June hits, we would have the first and second quarter payment. So that money would be available. And hopefully by then the state will issue us a letter, which I expect hopefully before July 1, the beginning of their fiscal year, which will tell us what the second two half pieces are. But at this point, we are definitely anticipating a hit. They need to collect the money to be able to disperse it. And there hasn't been a lot of road work, road activity, I think, to fund it. So.
Okay.
Okay. So we've heard from my budget stuff. We've heard from Tia's budget stuff. Does anybody else have any adjustments either up or down?
Well, and let me just say this again. The capital improvement committee, you know, meets every year to revise this and we're going to be continuing to meet. However, we've been really lax on how we've been funding things. And it seems like we've been putting things, you know, we already have a fire department that's fully established. We have other departments who aren't even close to being established. And, and if we're going to get ahead of this tax rate issue that we have, we need to start thinking long-term instead of short-term, which is exactly what, what is happening.
Exactly. I, I agree with you 100% that we should fund the, the fire department at a hundred thousand dollars to keep their equipment schedule on track. Further budget adjustments? Okay. How do we want to go about either accepting or rejecting these things? Shall I go first or you guys want to go with Tia first or how do you want to do?
So let's, let's talk about the fire department request again. Because the schedule that was developed was developed with the fire chief. I know he was going back because the department hadn't even approved what he talked to us about yet. And that's why equipment was moved into certain places so we could see how things worked. But the committee never approved those. So if we went back to the standard quo, he would, he would have an overage significantly more than that. So I, I think we, you know, I don't know what hap, Joe was on the call. Joe heard what was agreed to. And so was Leon, Bill and Heidi.
Yep. Like I said, there were nothing for me to look at regarding minutes or zoom recordings or anything like that. So I had to go to the other sources that were either in the meeting or had offered up some budget adjustments. And, you know, it's, I mean, spreadsheets, as you know, do not lie. And if you punch in the right dollar amounts for equipment replacement, you'll see that at $50,000, the fire department is going to start falling behind schedule regarding their capital equipment. You know, if we fund, if we fund, look, we made a deal with the fire department. We said, look, folks, we're going to give you guys a hundred thousand dollars a year. You guys can, for more or less without, you know, I'm exaggerating a little bit. We're going to give you a hundred thousand dollars a year. That's going to build up every year. Go buy whatever you want, but don't come back to us for another note. Don't come back to us for a loan. Don't come back to us for a bond.
I, I don't recall this agreement, Chris, of going to a hundred thousand dollars. It was one year you said, let's bump them up. And next thing you knew, every year after every year, we were doing it at a hundred thousand dollars to keep the status quo. Well, we're not funding other departments. That's a huge problem.
What other, Tia, what other department is not getting funded?
The highway department has equipment that, you know, we've only, we've neglected their equipment for quite a long time. Never mind the police department, who is completely totally forgotten about the majority of the time. You know, it just came to our attention this year, we actually did something. But what you don't realize, Chris, is you have a liability sitting in that police department. And it's because you're not treating your female employees the same way that you're treating your male employees. And there's a bunch of, bunch of legalities that could come out of this if we do not adequately start funding things.
I would say to, I would say that that's a disingenuous argument at best, just to accuse us, the board of not funding various departments. We're talking about increasing the, the police from 25 to 50,000. That's, that's a, that's a major increase right there. In a year, this is a pant, we just, we're coming off of a pandemic.
Chris, guess what?
Once in a hundred year thing. And we want to type, we want to spike the tax rate another one, 21%?
But here's the thing, Chris, you tried to cut this stuff last year. We said, put it to the voters. And guess what happened? The voters agreed with it.
Some of it got cut, some of it doesn't, didn't get cut.
Well, you know, and, and you really forget that some of these other departments, like your highway department, they are on the road 24/7, especially during the winter time. They are your first responders. If, if they don't go, fire and rescue does not go. Police does, they do not go. Right? And with, and sometimes without the police, fire and rescue will not go. So I think you need to think about the priorities here.
In what universe is going from $25,000 to $150,000 not proactive and funding the department?
Chris, it is proactive in funding the department going to 150, which came out of the capital improvement. And we wouldn't have had to jump that severe, Chris, if you had funded it at a, you know, the level that we were asking. You know, we're, you're trying to flatten the tax rate here.
The board is trying to play the delicate game of one foot in the present and one foot in the future. We've said all along, and I can refer to minutes after minutes after minutes that have been recorded, that said, once the fire truck debt comes off, which was 97,500, we were going to allocate those funds to the highway department. So not only did we allocate more money, or we're proposing to allocate more money to the highway department, we're also trying to keep the fire department at fighting strength. You have four, close to $4 million worth of equipment, $50,000 on a timeline, ain't going to cut it.
And they're the, the newest pieces of equipment and they have the lesser miles and the lesser hours.
And the highway department got a huge cash injection in 2015 with some new equipment as well. And where.
Because it burnt to the ground.
That's, that doesn't matter. They got new equipment. You have one of the most talented guys that has ever run our highway department, running that area right now. I am 110% convinced that that guy can get blood from a stone.
You know what? Chris, it's really unfair to do that to Leo and not like, he, yes, he is the, the best superintendent we've had. But at the same time, you're not getting, giving him the tools necessary to fully perform his job.
Tia, we just.
I'd like to break in and say, let's not make this any more personal than it is.
It's not personal. It's not personal. I just, I'm, I'm dumbfounded that increasing a capital reserve budget from 25,000 to 150,000 in your mind is a cut. That's, that's where I'm hung up on. So anyway, we will. Go ahead, Leon.
I have a problem with having it sound like we're getting into an interdepartment rivalry for the money. I think we ought to look at each department's needs along the way and not, you know. We didn't cut the fire department's reserves in order to increase highway or anybody else. But the discussion we had with the fire chief, one of the things he was talking about was when you get into those out years, there were a couple of engines that he suggested were probably going to be not replaced the way it was in the, the CIP program we started with. Because he wanted a much more piece of equipment and one that I happen to agree with. You may remember some discussions where I was overridden 10 years ago in terms of the type of equipment that he's talking about. And I think that we had an agreement during that meeting that the figures that we were talking about putting in were going to meet his needs. And so I'm, I'm having a hard time. I don't have the sheets in front of me to look at side by side. But we didn't. From my point of view, I didn't think we put them into a deficit position in order to buy that big piece of equipment.
Sure. Well, Leon, let me, let me just explain. So this is, this is where you are at for rolling stock in each department. You got fire department at 3.3 and you got highway department at 2.8. The problem occurred in the capital assumptions, if you will, in the, in the committee handbook that was put together, that was published. You have $300,000 over here and the it was requested for that number to be changed. And I have documented notes of that in 2019 when he came before the meeting and said, that is not the correct number to throw in there. And the correct number, if you, if you look at this number, it's, it's really 626,000. And, you know, I certainly don't want to steal the chief's ability to maneuver what he wants for his equipment. But I know that the piece of equipment that's been talked about a little bit is probably twice that amount.
That would, that's what, that's what we understood when we met with him.
Right. So if you have, if you have wrong numbers in here in the assumptions, your spreadsheet is going to look okay. But if you actually punch in the numbers beginning this year with just 42,000, which doesn't sound like a lot, it's only $10,000 difference. But if you all of a sudden put in the true replacement cost in 2030, if you fund it at the level that you wanted to fund it, you're going to have a structural deficit that's going to leave you half a million dollars in the hole down the road. So that was my only point.
I guess I have a problem with what we have in our spreadsheet. Because my understanding was he was going to come back with a proposal later on as, as the people in the fire department figured out what they really wanted and what it was going to cost, that those two figures you just had in there
Yep.
would go away and there would be a procurement in a later year. And we were talking about building up the reserves towards that later. He was talking about adding a year or two for the procurement of the replacement equipment.
Yeah. He indicated that he tried to correct the numbers in those reports a couple of times. And he showed me in 2019 that he sent a sheet with the updated amount that was never. So I'll see if I can pull this up.
Joe has a comment. Go ahead, Joe.
Just, I was obviously in the CIP meetings as well. And I kind of echo what, what Leon did say as far as the equipment and how it was kind of spaced out. When the chief gave his presentation, he basically said he was consolidating two trucks into one to, to meet the needs. And specifically, the heavy rescue was the one he wasn't looking to move forward with because moving to this new apparatus would give him the same ability on that apparatus.
Right. But that piece of equipment was twice the price, correct?
I, I don't know the cost because he said he had to take it back to the body of the fire department had to decide if they would be willing to make that operation change.
Exactly. So, and, and again, I've prefaced that a couple of times by saying, I didn't want to take any energy out of what the chief wanted to present to his fellow, fellow folks. But to the point of trying to get the number corrected for the freight liner.
So when we looked at that number and Joe, Joe was on that call when we looked at that number. It was an estimated ballpark because it was in 2030. The department hasn't even discussed or approved it yet. And we can't change numbers, Chris, until we actually have something in front of us and the department has actually talked about it and agreed upon it. And, and Jim was pretty clear that he had not seeked, sought approval from his department yet, nor had he discussed it.
Correct. But all of the options were more expensive than the numbers that you have presented. I have a sheet here that I'll share with you folks that says in 2019, he presented this board to the CIP committee and the dollar amount was not upgraded. So I don't know what to tell you on that. But if you're working with numbers that are lower than forecast, that of course is going to skew skew the spreadsheet. So. With that said, what's the board's pleasure for proceeding?
We need to take the articles one by one to decide whether we recommend them or not, or whether we want to revise them.
Sure. So.
Recommend the revision.
For the sake of simplicity, why don't I go through my stuff, then we'll go through Tia's stuff. And then if anybody else wants to make any more comments, or Tia can go first or whatever. Your, is there a preference?
Just to, to make following the meeting easier for Joe, why don't we just start with the warrant addendum and go down through the items because he has to recommend, he has to put on there whether we recommend or not, or any changes in the figures.
Okay. Why don't we start, hold, hold on, Joe. Why don't we start with the operating budget and we'll, we'll do my proposals, then we'll do Tia's proposals, or you want to do Tia's proposals first and then my proposals and, and stuff like that. And we'll just vote on them line by line. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Joe, what did you want to say?
No, I, I was just going to say, the operating budget seems to be where most of the, you know, Tia's recommendations don't seem to revolve too much around the capital, the other warrant articles, other than the operating budget, with the exception of the police department one. So the operating budget is where we're going to obviously have the most discussion. So if that's where you guys want to start, I think it makes no sense to bank through it.
All right. So. Okay. First up on the operating budget is a cut to code enforcement of $15,000, which is.
Figure bigger than that?
Tia's figure was 25,000. So I'll be more than happy to yield to my vice chair.
First time he's ever said that. First time he's ever said that.
Do you want to vote on each one? If so, I move we use Tia's figure.
Okay, uh, I, I would like to because Joe's been spearheading this. Uh, Joe, do you want to offer input versus twenty-five thousand versus fifteen thousand?
No, if that's the math that Tia came up with as far as the, uh, secretarial costs, um, you know, that's, I understand that's what the cut is coming from. So if that's what the math comes out to, I have no problem with it. Um, obviously, you know, I think being it hopefully passes through the town meeting portion. Um, this will be the first year. I understand why the cut is coming because we really don't know how busy it's gonna be. So I do understand that. Um, I think I explained to the board during the budget session, you know, the reason for me is I think the board needs to see what the full cost of this department will look like, maybe not this year, but coming down the road at some point.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so to make a cut of twenty-five thousand to the code enforcement, we'll do a roll call vote. Chris Blombach, yes, vice chair.
Yes.
Peter.
No.
Leon.
Yes.
Scott.
No.
Motion carries three to two. Okay, next up is we should probably, because I think Tia and I are on the same page on this for solid waste.
Yeah, my cut is, uh, fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five.
And do you want to just for the sake of the board expand on what that cut actually is?
Yep, so it's taking the, the five oh nine that had been budgeted and then with the extra increases and then based on um, the estimates or the, the breakdown for the single stream of the four ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-four thousand. That's a savings of fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five. And we had already included, um, in the solid waste department line, the increase that was being proposed for the bark, the additional bark mulch. Um, so that number should be able to stay, stay the same. So the, the cut would be fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five.
Okay. Ready to call the vote. Joe, do you have any comments on that cut?
Nope.
Okay, roll call vote. Chris, yes. Tia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five, nothing.
Can I just get the total one more time, just for note purposes, fourteen?
Thousand, six hundred and fifty-five.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, uh, I'm gonna go off memory here because we're gonna just try and combine both of them. I think you had an athletic cut of ten thousand.
They had a cut for ten thousand dollars. Um, they had budgeted eight thousand, two fifty for basketball. Um, and there, you know, there are some additional expenses here that they might not be able to utilize. So I made a cut of ten thousand dollars.
Okay, does anybody wish to speak to this cut?
I, I would vote against it. It's important for that, uh, segment of our population to, uh, have those things. I don't think we should take it away.
But they've already missed part of their budget, their budgeted items.
Yep, the, the year is young.
But that sport season's over.
Yeah, they'll use it next year then.
I'm inclined to vote no on this as well. They don't really ask for a whole lot and they usually return the money if they don't use it. So I'm not too, too worried about that. If we're ready to call the roll call vote. Chris Blombach, no. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes, I mean, no, I mean, no.
No. Leon?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
No. Motion fails, two to three. Okay, next up is.
I have one. Library, uh, cut of fourteen thousand as recommended by Budget Advisory.
Could you explain on what exactly that cut is?
Yep, so, um, the library, they had, um, additional expenditures for, I think it was cleaning supplies. I think they would budgeted ten thousand dollars for cleaning supplies. I know Lori Marco and Heidi Oakpoint of the Budget Advisory Committee are also on this call if you would like further clarification.
So, so they needed, they needed some materials and now you're saying you're taking money away because they needed them?
No, I'm not taking money away, but I also sat in on a library trustee call where they ruled over additional funds in case, you know, they had their budget cut from twenty twenty into twenty twenty-one. So I, I think we can get away with a cutting fourteen thousand dollars.
Can you elaborate on that, Tia, what that was rolling over?
Yes, that was rolling over twenty twenty, um, remaining operational funds into twenty twenty-one expense, expenses. And I believe that's exactly how the, the motion was worded at the time.
And why doesn't that get returned to the general fund?
Well, there's a question on that, which I, I won't get into. I know the town administrator is well aware and looking into that aspect of it.
Okay. All right, uh, so, uh, Tia, what was the, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
So I'm looking to cut fourteen thousand dollars out of the library fund and, um, we're also aware that there is an unreserved fund that they currently have funds in, which could be utilized to offset any cut.
Okay, ready to do a roll call vote?
I'd like to say though that I, I think that, you know, the library has done a pretty great job this year, working as best as they can. Um, and, you know, and, and having a healthy population doing it. And it's cost them more money and more time and, uh, and a lot more work. And I think cutting their budget, just, uh, there's no reason to do that when, you know, they still need the extra efforts and materials in order to continue. So I would vote against that.
Wasn't there some discussion of leaving this up to the taxpayers to let them choose this one?
I think that's a great idea.
Oh, I've got the scars for going up against library. I love Lynn and Patty. But I lose.
They love you too.
I'll lose every time. Okay, uh, in light of the fact that they had a surplus, if you will, of fourteen thousand dollars, I'll, uh.
And we're, we're not exactly sure how large that amount was, but we believe it was larger than that.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris, yes. Tia?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Leon?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
Motion carries three to two. Uh, next up, Tia, do you have anything before Red Cross?
I have, uh, White Birch.
Okay.
Um, I made a recommendation that we cut it in half and we sliced it down by thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand, okay.
Didn't we see a piece of paper that said they were offering to bring it down to fifty already?
I believe. No, no, that was made by the Budget Advisory Committee.
Okay. But we did get, we did get some correspondence, uh, that Joe gave us today, I believe.
And Joe, did they return, they returned a fair chunk of money this year, correct?
Uh, they did, yeah. Uh, they returned, I believe, everything. Is that correct, Russ?
That's what I'm showing on the latest reports that I got.
Russ?
White Birch, uh, did not spend any of their appropriation.
And that's just because of the pandemic and they could not do their programming, correct?
I, I can only speak to, uh, I require them to invoice me when they want money, uh, the four times a year and no one invoiced me, sir. I can't speak to the reason why.
Okay, so Tia's.
That's an important service for us. I, I don't think we should just hack it for, for no reason.
No, I tend to agree with you. I would like to develop partnerships like this where they take on the lion's share of the activity. I'm a big proponent of White Birch and I think they do a fantastic job. And I will say that if they in fact did return every last penny, they're obviously not, uh, uh.
Credible.
No, I, I would say they are credible. They're very.
That's what I mean, yeah.
They're a very good partner in town and I think that they provide a very valuable service, uh, to a lot of, uh, demographics in our, in our community. So, uh, anybody else want to speak on this?
I would like to make a comment that.
Marty McMurphy would like to.
Um, first.
Let's go with.
Do I have the first?
Yep.
I, I would like to say that, um, and I've said it before, White Birch is a bargain for the services they perform for this town. Mostly every town has a seniors program built into their recreation programs and are a separate senior citizen center they support with that facility with it. And, uh, they spend a hell of a lot more than sixty thousand or whatever they're getting here now. Uh, I, I am very much against cutting anything from their budget.
Very good. Uh, anybody else wish, uh, so Mark McMurphy, are you out there? Pete, Joe, can you, Mark, yep.
I assume you can hear me at this point.
We can.
We switched, uh, our office manager left at the very end of last year and, uh, our, we have a new bookkeeper. And every month that I get the financials from the bookkeeper, I am seeing money from the town of Henneker in the revenue section of my financials. Um, the, so I look for that. So I'm surprised to hear that we have not been asking for the money and my assumption without talking to our bookkeeper is that he has some type of automatic entry going into, uh, QuickBooks, but he has not been invoicing. And that is where I think the issue is. I can certainly testify to the fact that we have spent the money that I thought we had, um, because the senior programming hasn't stopped, uh, because of the pandemic. I don't know if that helps you or not.
Yeah, so the bottom line is you didn't take the money, but you didn't, but you spent it, you just didn't return it.
Right, we had a problem initially in the, uh, spring because of the way the town budget, uh, couldn't go past a certain date. And, uh, so there was no money collected for several months because we couldn't get it anyway. I was talking to Russ about that and I think that's what set this whole thing in motion for the mix-up.
Got it. Okay, we have a motion, uh, made by Vice Chair Hooper for a cut of thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for White Birch. Roll call vote. Ready? Chris, no. Tia?
Yes.
Yes. Scott?
No.
Peter?
No.
Leon?
No.
Okay, motion fails, four votes two, one. Uh, next up. Uh, I have a Red Cross, uh, reduction of a thousand dollars.
Yep, so do I.
Okay, uh, roll, any conversation on this?
I think it's a good idea to keep it open. They do a lot of good and it's peanuts for money.
Very good. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, Peter?
Yes, I believe that the Red Cross provides a terrific service if they're called upon to provide it, uh, in emergencies. They are a support system for emergency housing and I don't think we really utilize it as much as we should. However, that being said, what we do know is that they provide a lot of services regard to, um, don't blood donors and, and, and things of that sort. And I think they also operate in unison with White Birch. So, uh, I definitely think it's picky own to take a thousand dollars from them and I fully support putting them on board as one of our community programs supported.
Okay, further discussion. Okay, roll call vote to cut one thousand dollars out of the Red Cross budget as presented in the operating budget. Chris Blombach, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Scott Osgood?
No.
Leon Parker?
No.
Blackman Flynn?
No.
Motion fails, two to three. Red Cross remains funded at one thousand dollars. Next up, uh, Tia, want to run point on this?
Um, which one are we on, Fuller Library or Beautification?
Beautification.
Okay, so Beautification, we're, um, taking the four, deducting the fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. The funds that, um, were allocated for the podding of the flowers and stuff has been included into the solid waste line. As it was done last year.
Yeah, discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, for information, um, uh, we're cutting, it seems like solid waste isn't getting too much money this year in addition and we're, we're, we're gonna be adding another expense, the, uh,
No.
So, honey, that's all. I thought that maybe they could get more.
No, because what we're doing is we're reducing the total overall overhead by streamlining the recycling process, right? Which is costing us an arm and a leg. That's gonna reduce some time. Um, you know, we're, we might have some hour restructuring and stuff like that that happens as well, but we're reducing the overall operating budget based to efficiencies that are gonna happen at the transfer station. Leaving in the beautification allowance, but the beautification committee will they'll oversee that project, but it will stay in the solid waste line. So if anything were to ever change with that committee, that money is still, still there.
So what did they have for a budget request, fourteen thousand, nine fifteen?
Yes.
Correct.
And what are we doing, proposing twenty-five hundred or something like that, built into the waste, solid waste department?
Correct.
Yeah, well, I'd like to amend that if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, there's no formal motion on, on the ground yet. We're still.
Oh.
Debate section.
Move along, move along, go ahead.
The proposal is to cut the fourteen-nine, but no formal, no formal motion has been made.
Yeah, so the increase that we, that had been delivered to us was two thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. Um, that had changed between last year and this year within that operational line. So they've been, they've been increased almost three thousand dollars for, um, landscaping purposes.
Okay, have we, have we resolved the issue of who they respond to?
So they are technically under the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
However, they will be partnering with Kristen or the town of Henneker to do the plantings and to assist in any other, um, activities.
All right, Joe.
Uh, the reason the increase is in there this year is because the board wanted to move forward with replacing trashcans in the downtown. So that's the reflection of the increase that you see right now in that line.
That was only twenty-nine hundred bucks though, right?
Which is the increase.
Yeah, but there's, there's additional funds in there.
Not, not the fourteen thousand, nine hundred.
I'm talking about that solid waste line that Tia is referencing is increased right now in the twenty twenty-one budget because of the trashcans that the board wants to put downtown.
Correct, got it.
And the fourteen, six, five, five is just the reduction in the, um, what do I call it? Efficiencies.
But what, just, I'm just saying that doesn't include that twenty-five hundred that beautification was gonna be putting into that solid waste line. I understand there's an increase there, but that increase was in there for those trashcans, not for.
They already have four thousand dollars in there on top of.
Correct, which goes towards the bark mulch and the flowers that we've already been putting out there.
So what is the dollar amount that we're actually talking about for the Henneker beautifications, the fourteen thousand, nine fifteen?
The, the recommendation.
All fourteen, subtract fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen.
Very good. Fourteen thousand, nine, are you gonna put that in the form of a motion?
Well, we really haven't been doing motions all along, but subtracting the fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen from the beautification line.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Ready for a roll call vote? Chris, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
Leon?
I'm still not clear what we're voting on.
Cutting, we're cutting fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen from Henneker Beautification.
No.
Scott?
Yeah, I'm of the same as, as Leon. Uh, it's something that's very good for the, for the town and now we're just taking it off from under them without anything behind it. So I'll say no as well.
Okay, uh, motion fails, two to three. Um, community programs, Fuller Library, three hundred and fifty bucks.
I'm making, uh, chalk the three hundred and fifty.
Any discussion? Are you call the vote?
Uh, yeah. I'm sorry, what did you say?
Sorry, go ahead, Peter.
Three hundred and fifty.
Yeah. Now, just to make it clear here, Tia, is that, uh, money for the, um, program, a reading program they have that Hennecker, uh, citizens can participate in?
We have, we have never funded the three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, we've never done that, Peter. We've, we've killed it every year.
Okay.
Funded the three fifty before, it missed out
We had a time ago.
Okay. Ready to call the vote? Chris Plumbback, yes. Tia?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Leon?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
All right. Tia, any other cuts on the operating budget?
No, but I'm gonna say that we leave the ones that did not get cut from the operational budget still grants us the authority during the public hearing to, if there's any reconsideration, that we circle back to those.
I'm talking, I'm talking
No, that's just for the operational.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, this doesn't get finalized through town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing could, nothing can proceed, well, Tia is right. After the, uh, public hearing, we, we really should be able to take input. That's a whole idea of a public to take input to give us a chance to reconsider previous votes we took.
Correct. Okay. Any other?
So the total cuts to the operational budget, um, is one hundred thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, just so everybody keeping score.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
No, not everything passed.
No. Let me in.
You're in, Russ.
Okay, um, the, uh, the cut, the total cuts that I have are, hold on one second.
I came up with like sixty-eight thousand.
I've got fifty-four thousand five dollars.
Okay, so I've got twenty-five thousand out of code enforcement.
Yep.
I got fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-five out of solid waste.
Yep.
I've got, um, did we pass the fourteen thousand on library?
No, that's the next one I got, yep.
Okay, then.
Three fifty from Fuller.
Oh, yep, I have the thirty-two thousand for White Birch in there.
Yeah, so I got fifty-four thousand five dollars with that total that you just read off.
Yep, sixty-eight nine twenty.
All right. Thank you, Russ.
Yes, sir.
Keeping up, okay. Capital budget time. So, Tia obviously has the CIP recommendations. I've got a column labeled proposed adjustments, and we did not hear from other selectmen members on any other cuts. So I guess probably the best thing to do is just go line by line on this and see if we accept reject. Does that please, does that please the board?
You mean article by article, right?
Yes. All right, so first ups is, uh, CIP, so add to the parks ETF. Last year we did fifteen thousand for a mower. The CIP recommends twenty-five hundred. I propose no adjustment on that. So do we want to carry forward twenty-five hundred dollars? Ready to call a roll call vote? Chris Plumbback, yes. Tia Hooper?
Yes.
Peter Flynn?
Yes.
Leon Parker? Leon? Leon? Leon?
Yes.
Yes. And Scott?
Yes.
Okay, next up is Town Technology Fund. Two thousand twenty, the select board allocated twenty-five thousand. The CIP is recommending a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, there's a proposed judge, adjustment on the board of fifty thousand dollars to fund it at the rate of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Um, and just to remind everybody, this was the CIP's number one priority. We've also, the Board of Selectmen has, um, a goal for the town administrator to help with the technology. We are lacking in numerous areas as we've discussed previously. Um, a hundred and twenty-five thousand is just a component of it, but we need definitely updated financial software.
Okay. The seventy-five thousand is like less than half of what the bid came in for the one bid that we've got so far for the first year. It, it doesn't work.
Uh, we also have a fund balance in there that this will be added to. Uh, Joe, do you want to speak to this a little bit?
Sure. So I mean, I, I solicited three bids. We haven't officially gone out to bid or anything, but I did get free quotes from different companies just to get an idea of where we were standing. Uh, and again, there's, there's wide ranges. We have one that's over two hundred thousand dollars, one that's close to a hundred, and one that's close to fifty. Um, so a really lot, it's going to depend on the packages. You know, depending on how it's funded, it's really going to determine what, um, add-ons we have, you know, if we only start with one or if we start with the entire package, that's kind of where it's going to come down to, um, depending on how much it's funded.
So you can scale this, correct?
What's that?
You can scale.
Most of them you can scale. They're going to have different, you know, um,
Yeah. And
But yeah.
There's, there's different modules.
Thank you, that's the word I was
Yeah, a lot of the modules that we've looked at, right? Some of the components, like the payroll piece, we might want to stay with the current vendor that we have. We might want to eliminate that, but there's a lot of efficiencies that if we implement those, we can save more money in the long run based off of those ineffici, efficiencies. Also reduce the department head's times dealing with paper and reduce the time that it's taking invoicing to get to the town hall and getting approvals signed off on. It also reduces the paper, the amount of paper that we're printing in the office supplies that are needed. So there is a long-term cost savings here. And, and just because you're thinking this is only for the financial package, you have to remember we have outdated equipment everywhere. Equipment is not all the same, and if we're going to increase our security for these systems, we need to make sure that we're operating on a platform that is consistent.
Joe, what is the current balance in there?
Uh, the, the appropriation last year was the first year we started it, so twenty-five thousand.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion, uh, any other conversation on this subject?
Yeah, I'd have to go along with what Tia said. I mean, if, if, if we just could try to take this one step at a time, it'll never get done, and it'll always be a little confusing. I think going in with a good package and a good wallet, I think would be very valuable. And I would stick with the one twenty-five.
Okay, further conversation. Okay, I will make a motion to reduce the town technology funding to seventy-five thousand dollars, and we'll do a roll call vote, and you guys, yea or nay? Seventy-five thousand dollars. Chris Plumbback, yes. Tia Hooper?
No.
Peter?
Yes.
Leon Parker?
No.
Scott Osgood?
No.
Okay, motion fails. What is your pleasure?
I will, um, make a motion that we keep it at the one twenty-five.
Okay, further discussion. Roll call vote. Chris? No. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
Leon Parker?
Yes.
Scott Osgood?
Yes.
Motion carries, three to two, a hundred and twenty-five thousand it is. Next up is Police Department Building Fund, making a reduction of fifty thousand dollars has been proposed. The CIP recommends a hundred thousand dollars.
So let's move on from this one for right now, and let's go to a different one.
Okay. Uh, police, police equipment ETF, uh, which was twenty-five hundred dollars last year, has been proposed by the CIP Committee to go to ten thousand. I'm recommending a adjustment of five thousand dollars downward, so to, last year was twenty-five hundred, this year is five thousand.
So the reason why this was proposed at the, at the ten thousand dollar rate was, um, you know, a while back, we had weapons that were donated to us, um, that amounted, you know, over sixty thousand dollars. We also have, uh, MBTs that need to be replaced, um, at some point. And there's no guarantee that there will be grants available for that. So their equipment costs a lot, and we need to make sure that we're saving. So once those, the weapons and other equipment need to be replaced, we have the funds.
Okay, I'll make a proposal to fund at the five thousand dollar mark. We'll do a roll call vote, see if it passes. Chris Plumbback, yes. Tia Hooper?
No.
Peter Flynn?
Yes.
Leon Parker?
Yeah.
Scott Osgood?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one to, to fund at five thousand dollars. Should we return to the police building?
Nope, keep going.
Town-owned building, select board funded last year at five thousand dollars. CIP recommends twenty thousand dollars. Uh, there are no proposals to change the amount from twenty thousand dollars. Joe, I believe you gave us some news today that
Yeah, so we did have a boiler inspection today, which, um, which is required for the Department of Labor. Um, so our insurance company comes through to make sure that it's not releasing combustibles, things like that. Uh, the inspection failed, um, so we are going to be needing a boiler replacement. Um, I have a couple of calls out to get quotes, um, but obviously this, um, this money is important at this point to make sure that we can replace our boiler so that we're compliant with the Department of Labor.
And this was identified as a need within the CIP report before this incident happened.
Correct, but just a note of, a note of, uh, a comment, if you will, the boiler cannot do both air conditioning and heat because it's a forced hot water system. So, uh, twenty thousand dollars, vice, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Chris Plumbback, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Peter Flynn?
Yes.
Leon Parker?
Yes.
Sir Osgood?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if, if, if Joe's considering having a whole system changed so that it is more efficient.
I think when we go through the, when we go through the quote process, that's definitely something we can look at to see if propane's cheaper, you know, switching from oil, things like that. So, um, it's definitely part of the quote and bid process we'll take with it.
Well, and if you switch over to propane, then you might be able to
Might be able to, yep.
Okay.
All right.
All right. And I'll say yes.
Okay, motion passed, five nothing. Uh, next up, road maintenance. Last year, the select board and the town spokes voted seven hundred and fifty thousand. CIP recommends seven hundred and fifty thousand. There was an adjustment of a hundred and fifty thousand on the table, uh, with more or less breaking Old Hillsborough into two parts and reducing the funding to six hundred thousand. Further conversation on this?
I'm just going to reiterate, um, by, by separating the two projects, you're actually going to be increasing the cost of the overall road construction. Um, we've seen this over and over again. I, I don't think this is fiscally responsible.
There's a, there's a laundry list of stuff that we're hoping to do in twenty twenty-one. The Old Hillsborough, the focus seems to all be on the Old Hillsborough Road. That's only a part of the program. And I guess I'm having a little trouble understanding why we, we aren't looking at the whole package. What we came up with is costs of about a million and a half dollars for this year's program. We've got money left over. A part of the million and a half will be funded out of the previous seven fifty because it involves finishing work that wasn't finished on Patterson Hill and, and finishing the work on the, uh, on Weston Avenue. But taking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that is probably going to make two or three of the smaller jobs fall off the table.
Well, not only that, the long-term strategy of repairing some of these roads that are going to be high-dollar amounts. Um, some of the other ones that were identified, Foster Hill is another one. Um, you know, we have some, I believe Dodge Hill eventually is going to get on that list as well, based on the deterioration. So looking at the long-term funding strategy, I don't think that's a good idea.
Very good. We have a proposal.
I have to say though, that it's a lot of money, and we're, and we're kicking up the tax rate pretty well. And I think it's important to, to, to take down where we can year by year. Um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars i- is a lot of money. We, we have, we have a lot of money. We have a lot of work to do, but I just think it's, it's fair to the townspeople to, to take it down a little bit.
So can, can I just say this? So we voted on some of the operational dollars when we're looking at need, right? Um, we didn't vote through a couple of items, um, that were proposed for cuts that technically are not needed, but you're willing to cut the asset that the most people utilize, which is about sixty-nine percent of all of our residents, to travel back and forth to work, which actually increases their cost of maintenance to their vehicles over time. You think that's fair?
We have, we have a department that does a good job with what they have. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, you're cutting the legs off of them.
I don't think so. I, I think we're cutting the hands off the people that can't afford the tax bill.
Well, then maybe we should start cutting some of these other programs that are not a need.
Let's move on.
That's, yeah, that's out of, that's out of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. All right, so we have a proposal, uh, to go with six hundred thousand dollars for the road maintenance ETF. Uh, roll call vote. Chris, yes. Vice Chairman Hooper?
Yes.
Peter Flynn?
Yes.
Leon Parker?
No.
Scott Osgood?
Yes.
Motion carries three votes to two. Next up is a revaluation capital fund. Last year, uh, we did our revow. We had to allocate thirty-nine thousand to close out the balance. Uh, CIP is recommending twenty-five thousand. Joe, if I understood the, the summary of our conversation, it was going to be about a hundred thousand every five years. Do I have that correct?
Well, that's, that's the quote that we got because we, this past year, we're supposed to do a full revow. Uh, we weren't able to do it obviously because of COVID, um, but the quote that we received was just under a hundred thousand dollars.
Very good.
So, and CIP did not have that quote for the hundred thousand dollars, but Joe also talked to the CIP Committee about doing twenty percent increments of town um, for the revow.
Which, which is something I think the town should look forward to, um, possibly. I don't have a quote back from Avatar yet to know exactly what that cost is.
Okay. There's a proposal on the floor to cut the funding from twenty-five thousand or from thirty-nine thousand approved last year by the select board to twenty-nine thousand. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Chris?
That, that's not what you
No.
What?
That's not what you figured, Joe.
Last year, we funded thirty-nine thousand.
Oh, right.
This year, the CIP recommends twenty-five thousand.
Right.
We're proposing to adjust that down by five thousand to twenty thousand.
That's what I see here. That's, I, I'm just arguing of the way you described it.
Didn't I, did I misspeak, misspoke?
No, he, he had the wrong column, I think, at first, but you're all set now.
Anyway, we're funding revow at twenty thousand. I'll keep it short and sweet. Uh, roll call vote. Chris, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yeah.
Peter Flynn?
No.
Leon Parker?
No.
Scott Osgood?
Yes.
What does that put us at? Two, three, motion fails?
Correct.
Okay, funds it at twenty-five thousand. Next up is ambulance fund at seventy thousand. I don't think there's any debate on this, is there?
Um, so I just want to reiterate that sixty thousand, um, come from, once again, the Bradford funds and only ten thousand be appropriated if we do not receive those funds.
Okay. Ready for the vote? Vote call. Chris Plumbback, yes. Tia Hooper?
Yes.
Peter Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yep.
Mr. Osgood?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is fire equipment reserve, which has historically been funded at the rate of a hundred thousand, but they don't need the fire building fund for twenty-five thousand to restore funding up to a hundred thousand dollars. Further discussion. Ready to call the vote? Chris Plumbback, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yeah.
Peter Flynn?
Yes.
Leon Parker?
No.
Joe, uh, Scott Osgood?
Yes.
Sorry, Joe. Motion carries three to two. Uh, fire building fund, no proposal to add money. Transfer fund, no proposal to add money. Bridge repair, ten thousand dollars. This is pretty automatic. Further discussion. Roll call. Chris Plumbback, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Peter Flynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Leon Parker?
Yep.
Mr. Osgood?
Yes.
Okay, next up is highway equipment fund, which was funded last year at 25,000. CIP recommends 150,000, there are no further proposed adjustments to it to carry it at 150,000. Are you call the vote?
I I so we said we talking about um. Leaving it at 150?
Yes.
It's a big jump, it's a big jump from the previous year.
A big jump, but we had 100,000 come off the books.
Yeah, but you won't, you only have like $26,000 within that fund, based on what was allocated last year. Which was not recommended by CIP, we asked for $100,000 last year to flatten this out. Um, and based on the scheduling of equipment, because we did have the fire and we did have to purchase three trucks all in one year. We have spaced those out and we're actually over the 12 year recommended timeframe, well over on some vehicles. Um, for replacement.
I believe this is your dollar amount that you recommended, 150,000.
Yes, I'm just arguing the point of the 150.
Okay. Further discussion. Ready to call the vote? Chris Plonback, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Peter Flynn?
Yes.
Leon Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Osgood?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We will now return to the police department building fund, which was historically funded at $50,000 for the. By the select board, CIP recommends $100,000.
And.
Uh, there's an adjustment for $50,000 downward for a allocation of the historical amount of $50,000. Discussion.
I'm gonna actually say that we keep it at the $100,000.
Okay, further discussion. Ready to call the vote?
I think it's a good idea to have the money there. We don't even have a plan or a or or the property for it yet, and I think it's a good step in the right direction, but. Well, why kick up the tax rate if we don't have to?
Correct. Ready to call the vote? Chris Plonback, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes, no, no.
Yes, I heard a yes.
No.
recorded in the minutes? Peter Flynn?
Uh, I I vote yes.
For the 50,000?
Yes.
Yes, Leon Parker?
No.
Scott Osgood?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries three to two. Okay, that takes care of that stuff, uh. Do we need to do anything with the warrant for the sewer wastewater 3.2?
Nope. That's gonna be on the warrant.
And.
Hey, so can I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
So there's going off the warrant, there's there's some stuff that we missed. Um, the first one's gonna be the extradition equipment for the fire department for $42,000.
That's just the withdrawal for them to take from the fund, right?
Yep.
Chris, can you stop sharing your screen so I can see?
Oh, sorry, my bad.
Do we have, uh, can I get a vote on that, just so I can keep notes on everything?
Uh, 40, so fire extraction, uh, roll call vote, Chris, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Motion carries five, no.
Um, there was a request for the 10 wheeler, Tenco body trucker highway. Uh, $200,000 with 150 coming from the unreserved fund balance, but then 50,000 coming from taxation.
Uh, so how? This was structured a little bit differently, if I recall.
No, so this is similar to another vehicle purchase that we did, I'm gonna say two to three years ago. Um, so the total overall purchase price is $200,000, 150,000 comes from unreserved fund balance. Leaving only $50,000 to be raised by taxation.
So for.
That was last year.
Well, my my comment on this is that. The board traditionally uses some money from the unreserved balance to buy down the tax rate.
Yes.
And your proposal to you is to.
Well, it's not just.
Earmark 150,000 of that for this dump truck. And then, Joe, you said when we chatted, uh, and Russ, please chime in here, you feel that the board could maybe borrow 250 out of it?
Yeah, I think in speaking to Russ and looking at where we're at, uh, 250 would be the max that we'd be able to tap out of our fund balance total.
So the board, the board, I understand the question in front of us can either apply that 250,000 to tax rate reduction. Or earmark 150,000 for this dump truck and 100,000 to tax reduction. Do I have the synopsis correct? The summary?
Yes.
Be the same thing from a financial perspective, more than how you write the article, that's the only difference.
Got it. All right, further conversation on this.
Yes, yes. I'm bringing this up because I'm concerned about taking money from the fund balance. I'm concerned about the possibility of the town's litigation with EverSource. And should there be any large amount that the town has to pay? My impression was that we were kind of keeping that in mind and retaining the fund balance to, you know, provide for that. Uh, also, the other concern, I haven't checked it yet, but whatever the PRA recommends to keep in the fund balance. They send with that tax rate setting every year, and I'm not sure, it's usually between seven and 10%. Uh, on Hannicker, uh, and I and I don't know where we stand on that, so maybe maybe Joe could tell me or Russ or. Before I take a vote.
I can tell you that um, the 250,000 represents uh, pretty much unspent appropriations from the current year.
Okay.
And so I, i- i- if everything goes as I as I envisioned it, basically, we would. Our situation wouldn't change with regards to the EverSource, we'd have roughly uh, a little over a million dollars left in the unreserved fund balance. The um, um, the cost of the EverSource with interest as it keeps tweaking a little bit is around, uh. I believe it's around 300,000, so we are still in the seven or eight hundred thousand dollar balance forward. Depending on how much more we put in from this year.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to know what makes those trucks so expensive.
Okay, so the choice in front of us is, do we do 250,000 in tax relief or 100,000 in tax? So what's the board's pleasure?
I can go the high number.
Tax relief or dump truck?
Yeah, tax relief.
Then you better change this to 200,000. To come from taxation.
But but that means it'll probably get killed on the floor.
Depends on who proposes the cut.
Meaning the floor at town meeting?
Yeah.
The truck.
Now, right, right. The question was tax relief, and by tax relief, I thought that it meant we were gonna take the fund balance down and relieve taxes to buy this truck.
250, 250, no, no, that's not really, no. The the choices are 250,000, which is basically 50 cents on tax rate, more or less, what, 48 cents, Ross?
Uh, uh, hold on a second. 53.
53 cents, okay, so 53 cents off of tax rate. Or if you buy the dump truck. You're actually increasing the tax by.
42 cents, or the net cost of the 200,000 would be 42 cents.
I think it's less than that. Isn't it, if you do them?
Uh, 200 divided by the force, 7198.
No, you're right.
The effect on the tax rate is the same, whether you apply it here or apply it at the end of the. Total, because you're gonna have to increase the total here.
Right, the the bottom line is it is the same number. It it, that's why I say it is really only how you wanna word the warrant article that makes the difference.
I would leave the warrant article, you know, so we're offsetting it there. If people vote that down. It's still up to the board if we want to apply funds at the end. So I would leave it, so they, you know, so it's offsetting.
This is how we bought the uh, rubber track, next.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Could someone read this article over again?
Sure, I'll read, yeah.
I'm gonna take a 30 second break.
Go ahead, Joe. Uh, to see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate, the sum of $200,000 for the purchase of a 10 wheeler and Tenco type multipurpose body. 150,000 dollars will come from the unreserved fund balance and 50,000 dollars to come from taxation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
You guys take any action?
Well.
What'd you guys decide?
We just waited for you.
Okay, Peter, did you get your?
I got my answer, yeah, I'm ready to vote when you wanna bring it up.
Any other further discussion on this?
We really have two questions, one is whether or not to buy the truck, and the second one is how to fund it.
I I'm torn on this issue, I really am, because I wanna provide tax relief to the taxpayers. But I also wanna get the highway department another truck.
You wanna know where you are?
What's that?
You wanna know where you are in cost?
Uh, it's 200,000 for the truck.
No, 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 the impact, where you are in your budget.
Oh, sure, if you got, do you have an update?
I I've been following along all night and um, the total cuts to the budget, like 214,005 dollars. Adding another 100,000 in fund balance would basically give you a total reduction of 314,005 dollars. Brings the rate down to $11.43 or an increase of $1.49.
And if you went the full, full way with the tax relief?
Meaning, don't buy the truck?
Correct.
Uh. Hold on a second, that would bring the rate down to $1.7.
So it would be 1050 or 1090? Six?
Uh, 1143 or 1101?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna remind you that there are additional pieces of equipment that are, that need to be funded.
I agree.
Coming up in, you know, right on top of this, so um, I highly recommend that we purchase this this year.
I don't necessarily disagree with you. So it's basically 1101, 1101 or 1143?
Correct.
I'd go along with buying it.
I'm gonna go last this time. Let's do the roll call vote, we'll go with Vice Chair Hooper.
Of course, yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Leon?
I'm not sure what I'm voting on, but I think I want to buy the truck.
You do. If you wanna.
Leon's buying it.
If you wanna buy the truck, you vote yes.
Yes.
Easy peasy, yes.
The the selling point here is that it's coming from fund balance, my question was answered and I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, me too.
So the vote did also authorize the additional 100,000 in fund balance, so 150 going to the truck and 100,000 just being applied, correct?
Well, we haven't decided that, but that we were chatting about that.
Oh, okay. I I wanted to make sure I understood the.
No, uh.
Yeah, so CIP looked at this and we, you know, 150,000 to purchase the the truck, leaving 50,000 for taxation.
But 150 from fund balance, right, Tia?
Yeah, unreserved fund balance.
And did we want another 100,000? So while we're talking about fund balance, Joe, you wanna, should we talk about this right now? Just apply 100, you guys good with 100,000 and?
Well, let's let's just keep going with the highway thing and then we'll circle back on that additional 100. So we need authorization to utilize that 150 in the highway warrant article.
Okay, Joe, is that, which one's next? Authorization?
Yeah, that's, it's all, it's all one warrant article, I mean, so we know we wanna buy the truck for the for the full amount, so now it's just the board's deciding if they want. The warrant article as presented with 150 coming from fund balance and 50 coming from taxation.
Yeah. So we good with that?
Yep.
Your roll call vote?
We already did it, I thought.
Yeah, yes, for the 100.
Good, that's what I'm asking, I know that was a complicated warrant article, there was a lot of things moving on, so.
Okay.
Are you good, Joe, you?
I'm good, yeah, if you're if.
Okay, next one, next one.
Um. Did we do highway block grant?
Highway block grant's a no brainer.
Yep.
And the the amount is still to be determined and the 100,000 dollars is just a placeholder, just in case we get the revenue.
Uh, the only two warrant articles left, because we're not gonna do the Azalea Park, because we don't have the sums, you want more information on that for the next meeting? Is you have the sewer um, operating and then the water.
So the water, we can't vote on, because that's sewer commissioners?
You mean water commissioners?
Water. Yeah, water commissioners, sorry.
And sewer, are we good with the budget as presented? Roll call vote, Chris, yes. Vice Chair Hooper?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any unfinished budget issues that we need to talk about? Joe?
The board's gonna need to decide if they're good with the order as presented right now, if they wanna shuffle anything around.
Um, can we do that at the public hearing? Because that's normally when we have done it.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other on budget before we move on in the agenda?
Was there the, was there a vote on the 100?
For the fund balance?
No brainer.
For the fund balance or the block grant?
The uh, fund balance, the additional 100.
So we we did 150 for um, in the warrant article for the purchase of the new highway truck, the Tenco.
Right.
It's 50 coming from unre- uh, 50 coming from taxation.
Right, but there was, uh, Chris had mentioned he that he was thinking about doing 250 for total unreserved fund balance. With the 150 coming from yours, which would leave 100 on the table.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the withdrawal of another 100,000 for tax relief.
So, Chris, we can wait until the public hearing to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The only question I have is on what I summarized for tonight's meeting, do you wanna see that 100,000 or not?
I guess not.
Okay.
No, because, no, not right now.
Okay, that's, that answers my question, thank you.
I have a question about the block grant, you said you had. I have a question uh about the block grant. You said you had a hundred thousand put in as a, you know, as a placeholder. Don't we have that amount yet?
No, the second part, uh, the, the state has the years go from July to July. So the only thing we know are the last two payments, which are gin- uh, first quarter and second quarter for us.
Alright.
When it comes time for the third and fourth quarter, that will be the state's new year, and we have not received any information from them on what the actual number might be.
Okay, any other budget issues? I'm seeing any. Uh, we will go on to nothing for old business or correspondence. Uh, Joe, Town Administrator Report.
So I'm gonna keep this brief just because we already kind of, this is just, the idea of this meeting was really just for the budget purposes. Um, but I just wanted just to let everybody know uh of a couple bills that are coming up that are of importance for towns. Um, and the two of them are HB two seven four and Senate Bill seventy-two. And specifically, what they're looking at is changing the state's contribution rates to the retirement system. Um, which is something back in two thousand and thirteen, uh, the state stopped funding. So um the towns are, have kind of absorbed all of that money. Uh, so tomorrow, HB two seventy-four uh is gonna be asking that the state start contributing five percent contributions, uh, which would save the political subdivisions um in twenty twenty-two seventeen point six million and twenty twenty-three eighteen point nine million and in twenty twenty-four eighteen point five million. Uh, these are specific to a group two members, so police, fire and teachers. And then Senate Bill seventy-two uh is actually a fifteen percent contribution that the state would have to start making, um, which would save the political subdivisions in twenty twenty-two fifty-three million, in twenty twenty-three fifty-four point two million, and in twenty twenty-four fifty-five point six million. Um, you know, if any of it, they're asking for anybody, obviously, who may wanna be interested in, in speaking at this hearing to hop on this Zoom call tomorrow, that you can get this information. But this does have a big impact to towns, because um, again, since two thousand and thirteen, um, the, the towns have absorbed a hundred percent of the employer contributions in this retirement system. The state hasn't funded it. And so I just wanted to pass that on to everybody.
What else you got?
That's it.
Okay, I have a text message from Ms. Bossy, from the messenger there. Uh, she wanted to know what was the final amount on the tax rate?
Um, given the decision to not reflect any additional fund balance, I am at one dollar and seventy cents increase, a tax rate of eleven sixty-four, which would bring you to one dollar and seventy cents.
One dollar seventy cents, I'm answering her. Uh, okay. Uh, Joe, you're, you're all set.
I'm good.
Selectmen reports. Mr. Flynn.
None.
Mr. Osgood.
I did get the docu-sign done.
Thank you.
Other than that, nothing else.
Mr. Parker. Mr. Hooper.
Nothing.
I have nothing. Okay, at this point in the evening, it's time for public comment number two. If there's anybody out in the lands that wish to address us, please send us a text or put your hand up or the hand icon or text Joe or text Tia or text Peter, anybody? So anybody who wants to address the board on it? Okay, not seeing anything. Joe, do we, 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 we don't need a non-public?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, anything else before this board? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Motion made. Parker seconded.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Roll call vote. Chris, yes. Tia?
Yes.
Yeah.
Peter?
Yes.
Scott Osgood?
Yes.
Leon Parker?
Yep.
Alright, thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate everybody hanging in there. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.